Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us and thank you for being with us this afternoon. It is Tuesday, November 14th, 2023. I'll call this regular school board meeting to order. Again, thank you, Board colleagues, for joining us. Dr. Stebbelfield and staff and any guests that we have present in person or online. Thank you for joining us today. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We've got lots to get to, so I'll start with our board norms and protocols. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we're following our norms when conducting district business. Again, good afternoon, thanks for joining us. And with that, Ms. Smith, good afternoon. Would you please do a roll call? Thank you.
Yolanda Clark.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Would now entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So would now entertain a motion, Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education, recess to executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation pursuant to a non-elected personnel exemption under the Kansas Open Meetings Act with Dr. Anna Stebbelfield, Mr. Greg Ohean, the board to be present.
So moved.
I'm sorry, before we move, for 25 minutes going in at 4:04.
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Further discussion, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, roll call please.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
Summum.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Ms. Smith, roll call please.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, motion to recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exemption for employer-employee negotiations under coma for 10 minutes going in at 4:40 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, Samree Devon, Steve Lilly, and Dr. Judith Kemp.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you. Return to open session, please. Moved by Janie.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Drew, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yeah.
Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect privacy interests of parties involved under coma going in for five minutes, for five minutes going in at 4:53. Moved and seconded, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Ms. Humphries, seconded by Ms. Drew. Any questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
All right. We are back in open session. Thank you, Board. You'll notice we do have one more executive session. We will push that back a little bit in the agenda. But next on our agenda, it would entertain a motion that the Kansas City Board of Education opened the public hearing regarding the Board's intent to open the enrollment for the 2024-2025 school year.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now in a public, open public hearing. I would invite any community members or anyone that would like to, that would, that wishes to speak on the Board's intent to open the enrollment, to please come forward to the podium. Thank you. And if you could just state your name, and then you can, you may start. And then before, I think we'll just have you send, make sure you have your information to our board clerk so that we can make sure we account for you. But welcome. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you. My name is Heather Wilk. I'm in my second year here with the district. I've worked for a couple other districts. And I am currently the Principal-Secretary, Registrar and Treasurer for Stony Point South. I do have some questions or at least requesting some considerations for the end user such as myself. Currently, we have four documents that need to be submitted for our students here. There's like a 30-day, you know, they can have 30 days to turn things in. How, my question is, how are we going to treat these students differently? Will they need to have everything up front before we approve them? And then kind of what the rollout looks like? When will you be? Are you still in like the infancy stages of trying to figure out when you're going to have the enrollment period for them, when you're going to have them for our students? What reregistration looks like? So you're trying to get your numbers? You know, I know a lot of the families move, so March is not a real good idea, but just from my perspective of being the end user and how can we make sure that our data is correct for KSDE? You know, do we get reimbursement, financial reimbursement for these students that are coming in from the state of Kansas? You know, those?
So I can answer some of those questions, although not all of them. This process is being driven primarily by a statute, legislative change. So it will be different from in years past in terms of what the enrollment process looks like. What will happen is that once the policy is adopted or put in place, and we're required to have a policy by January 1st of this coming year. Part of that policy will set a deadline by this Board for administration to provide capacity information for the district as a whole and for different programs and buildings within the district. And that will be reported back to the Board sometime in May. And at that point in time, that capacity setting will sort of set the framework for what the district may or may not have available for individuals who are not residents of the district to be able to enroll in the school district. That definition of non-resident that falls into that application doesn't include things like homeless students and other individuals who are, you qualify essentially as residents even though if they don't live technically in the district. This is for people who don't live in the district but are essentially applying to be admitted as students. This is for people who don't live in the district but are essentially applying to be admitted as students in the district. So enrollment of our residents will take place until sometime in July. And there's a, I think there's a date in the policy that's proposed, and again, that's sort of tied to statute. Then in July, what will happen if there are spaces available based upon our estimated capacity? Individuals who apply for non-resident enrollment or attendance in the school district will have their applications in by that deadline. And then they will be admitted to the district depending on spacing. If there's enough room for everybody, they all come in. If there's not, then it will be on a lottery-type system per statute. And then those people will be added. A couple of your questions, I'm not sure the statute addresses, but I think we'd be in the same spot. Individuals who roll out of district are still going to be required to have that paperwork completed, just like a regular student who enrolls in the district. By statute, we're still required to get health data. We're still required to get a copy of the birth certificate or comparable paperwork, those types of things. That doesn't change. We'll probably still have some degree of a period to allow for enrollment and then get that paperwork to us, just as we've done in the past. But those things are not set in stone in the policy. The policy is just addressing right now what, what aspects of the actual enrollment part of that process would look like. And then our regular enrollment policies would kick in from there, and as well as our practices and procedures for gathering paperwork, documentation, free reduced lunch application, all of those things. Again, trying to gear that toward the September count date, but the statute is a little unclear on what degree of monetary amount we would get. I don't think we'd anything in the first year. It would be in the second year if they continue enrollment after that, is my understanding.
My understanding, just regular headcount, if they're, if they're September 20th, they count as, as enrolled.
Right.
But there's no extra money just because you come from someplace else.
Correct. That's right.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was, yeah, by the headcount.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see, I think I have.
While you're thinking there, I apologize. We do have Spanish interpretation available today. Si tenemos interpretes para los que necesitan interprete para la reunión hoy. Si usted necesita interpretación en español, por favor levante la mano y aquí tenemos a interpretes que le puedan ayudar con la reunión hoy. If you do need Spanish translation or interpretation, I'm sorry, you can raise your hand and we do have interpreters available. Si necesita algún interprete, por favor levante la mano y aquí los tenemos disponibles. I apologize.
No, no problem. So my final thing is, so would I continue to come to Board meetings to get updates? How do we have input or can we give input?
Yeah, I think that, so tonight's meeting is for public input. But that doesn't have to be the only time to get or receive that public input. The Board will adopt this as policy in some fashion in December to meet the January deadline. But there's still a lot of work to be done in terms of implementation. And it doesn't mean that once it's adopted that it's adopted and never moves from what it is currently adopted as. So if there's things that you have concerns about or ideas you have on how certain things ought to be navigated, I would encourage you to get those submitted either to administration or the board clerk or somebody so that we can have those and be taking a look at them as we implement the policy and put it in place.
Okay.
I was going to ask, do you guys have like an attendance clerk gathering, PLC, training, professional development opportunity?
Yeah, we have great PD every Wednes, well, pretty much every Wednesday.
It's great, pretty much every Wednesday.
Every Wednesday, unless it gets canceled and something gets trumped. But no, the PD is amazing, so.
Yeah, if I hear you correctly, I think what I would be portraying to Dr. Stubblefield is as the policy gets adopted, that then the attendance clerks or secretaries have some type of implementation conversation around what this looks like in its actual, actual, in its implementation, so that you all are prepared to answer the questions and to provide information because you all are oftentimes the first line of defense for questions. You and registrars. And so so I think that's something we can, we, I'm sure that Dr. Stubblefield has already thought of it as we try to get to those pieces.
Just wanted to make sure, that's why I'm here.
Listen, thanks for keeping us honest. Appreciate you being there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments and questions. And we will, yes, if there, there will be opportunities to follow up and give more input. Are there, yes, Ms. Page?
And I'm sorry, I didn't ask this earlier. I didn't. Now, will there be another session or is this the only formal setting that the public has to ask these kind of questions?
So, so this is the only required session by the statute. And we do have a short timeframe. The Board is certainly capable or able to hold additional sessions if the Board chooses to do so, but we basically have to adopt a policy in December in order to have it in place for January. So if you're going to do that, you would have to, you have a pretty tight timeframe to do that.
And, and I don't know where we advertise so that people would know or give them an opportunity. If they couldn't come here, at least they could send whatever questions they had in. I was just, I didn't know, I'm just asking.
Ms. Page's point, don't we have a daytime meeting in December? Is that cutting get too close? That way you had an evening option or afternoon option and daytime option?
So this will be the only hearing. We did advertise it on social media, website and all of those platforms. If individuals have any input, like all policy, they can either send it directly to Leslie, myself. The attendance clerks and the staff that's within the building, those who are end users, we can make sure that in their PLCs and their meetings, we put the policy in front of them to give feedback. But the other component is that you'll adopt it by, by the January deadline, but you can change it at any time. Like how you, you can adopt, adjust policy. Is that right, Greg?
Yeah, you can, you can adjust or modify the policy. I would caution in this case, because I was actually doing one of the other Board meetings on Monday and that question came up about, okay, we have to have it adopted by January. Can we, then we make changes in February? Well, you can, but remember, when you, by adopting this policy, you're, you're also putting in deadlines in place for administration to do and accomplish certain things, to include reporting on capacity by May, to set deadlines for applications for out-of-district enrollment. So you're setting some deadlines that are going to be hard to adjust once you get this thing going in year one. Likely, if you're going to make major adjustments, it would have to be for year two because, just because of the way it's going to work. You can certainly tweak it. The Board can adopt and modify policy at any point in time. But understand that this particular policy is going to affect how you guys, or how the district rather, enrolls students and sets deadlines for those applications because the application deadline, if there's capacity and if you have a certain number of students out of district enrolling, then those students have to be selected as to who's able to come in and who's not if there's not enough capacity for all of them. So you are going to have some components that are going to.
My concern, we struggled this year with enrollment. So is July a good month to start it? And then you're going to add on people coming in? I'm just asking, I'm not the brainchild.
No, the problem.
We think about maybe not having it in July and bump it up?
I think the, I think the problem is the July date, I believe, is in the statute.
So that. Do, do we have the right to change that?
I don't believe you do. You could move it, you could make it earlier, but I don't think you can make it later.
Well, I'm not saying make it later. I'm just saying we struggled with July this time. And I don't know if we brainstorm and figured out what we did wrong or how we can make it better. And now you're adding on more people. So how do we figure that out?
It's a good, it's a good question, but I, I mean, the two things you got to think about in terms of what that deadline looks like is it's your residential enrollment, you know, you really need to know that early in the summer so that you can set what that looks like for potential enrollment deadlines for out-of-district students. Leaving some allocation in your capacity study based upon the knowledge that at least in this district and in most districts, you're going to have a lot of kids who show up in August and enroll who are in district students still.
No, I get that. I'm just saying we had a problem.
Yeah.
So how do we work that out?
So I will say that we did internally look at things and how we can streamline them and while we can't promise it'll be perfect, we can say that it will be better. The team, it was the first time that we had like the Welcome Center up and running. They did review processes. We have, we are adding an additional person. And so there are some things that we'll be streamlining. Just to acknowledge like the, the, the time and the hard work that that group put in. So they have looked at it and they are putting some things in proactively that we learned from.
Greg, I want to ask this question. So nothing forbids us from having another open public hearing at our December meeting and then within that same meeting approving the policy?
No, there would be nothing prohibiting a second public meeting if the Board chose to do that. You had, you had to have one. You're required to have one. And that had, that one had to be before the final adoption of the, of the policy. So that's, that's just questionnaire.
Would be supportive of it, hearing both of your questions. I wonder if it's worth, I know that it's worth it regardless. Still offering another opportunity for folks who maybe couldn't make it here tonight during that December meeting, having this, having another open enrollment hearing session and then knowing that at that meeting we would also approve the policy following. Should there be nothing, I don't want to say too crazy, in the hearing that stands out, but that's kind of just an idea suggestion, if you all felt like we needed to have, provide that space, if that's where your questions were coming from.
I'm, I'm supportive of that. I think, I think what I hear more than, more than anything too is just making sure, and you touched on it, just making sure that we are having conversations, being consistent, minimizing confusion as this rolls out for all staff and all those that are definitely directly impacted. So I, I think it's kind of two-part.
I will say one other thing, just, and this is not policy-driven, but some districts acknowledging that this is going to be a change for enrollment are making a concerted effort to communicate out to their families in the district the need to get enrollment done earlier rather than later. Whether that's effective or not, I don't know because just like, you know, anything else, families have a lot going on and, you know, they're trying to enroll in schools. Sometimes they don't do it as early as we would like them. That would help us out from an administrative standpoint. And we have, you know, we're certainly going to take students all the way through August and even into the school year if they're residents of the school district. But we have to be able to have some date in, in May to be able to say, look, this is what our capacity is. And then the enrollment numbers come in for in-district students in between, starting, I guess, now and through that July cutoff. And once that July cutoff hits, that's when we look at to say, okay, we've got spots. We need to decide whether we've got out-of-district enrollment. And so we've been taking, we would take applications in advance of that.
Is there a reason why we couldn't use FFA Day in the spring as a start to that process, Dr. Stubblefield? I know that our counterpart across the way, like they've already started their 24, 25 and their magnet programs. Is that just an internal capacity thing? Is that a?
Well, technically, yes, we can do that. It will really be dependent upon master schedules and those kind of things at the secondary level, of course, offering. So technically, yes. I, we, I can explore that with the team on what that means and what the capacity is and then provide a update.
So is there support to hold another public hearing at the December Board meeting? Or is there opposition to that? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Page?
No, I wanted to make a motion that we have another public hearing.
Second.
Allow people the opportunity to come.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions?
The only discussion I would say is in, at the December meeting, if we could, I don't know who does this recap, but just make it really clear to the public, like here are all the ways that you were able to, to express your thoughts because we, we tried to be very, very thoughtful in how we did this. And I heard Dr. Stubblefield say all these different ways that people have the opportunity to do that. And I think before we make the final motion and adopt that we need to, we need to recap that for for, for our student body.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Additional questions or discussion? I would just say, I know December's Board meeting is a daytime meeting. I think we start at 9:00 AM?
Yes.
9:00 AM. And I know we have afternoon. We're kind of breaking it up. We were starting off at Carl Bruce. And then we will take a break and come back at some point to have lunch here and continue the meeting here in the early afternoon. So it will be, does the Board have a preference on whether we want to start at the morning with the open public hearing? Or do we want to do that in the afternoon when we come back here? Do you all have a preference on that? Or is that something that you want to give staff leeway to, to look at and recommend? I think we can do either.
I would say the first thing, just because if I'm a parent dropping off or I'm someone who has to get to work, I don't have to come back in the middle of the day or like try to figure out what time because sometimes we are longer-winded than others. And so I think starting off, having it and then adopting it at the end of the day would make sense.
Anyone, any strong opposition to start, starting the first thing in the morning with the public hearing? Okay. Any additional questions or comments, thoughts? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Elonda Clark.
Elonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, no.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, no.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Just to clarify, Ms. Smith, the notice, because it's a public hearing, it has to follow the same notice protocol?
That's correct. So it's got to go out in the same, at least the same publications in two weeks' time.
And if we can make sure we also communicate that via our social media and everywhere else that we publicly communicate with our parents, that'd be great. All right. Are there, and before I continue, we do, again, we do have interpreters available of different languages, Spanish and other languages tonight. If anyone needs, requires interpretation tonight, please raise your hand.
Mr. Lopez, if I could just add in the name of interpretation, can we also make sure that this information is translated? I saw it posted, but I did not see it in multiple languages. And so if we can make sure the next notice has that as well.
Excellent suggestion. Thank you, Ms. Russell. Is anyone, is there anyone else wishing to speak on, during the open public hearing on open enrollment? Please step to the podium. Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Elonda Clark.
Elonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. We'll continue with our agenda. Our next agenda item are our awards and recognitions. First on the agenda is our Employee of the Month. So would invite our Dr. Sutherland to come forward to present Employee of the Month. Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
I'm sorry, it's not coming up.
To our Board President, Randy Lopez, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield, to Kansas City, Kansas Public School Board, and all who support Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am April Sutherland, the Director of Human Resources Director for Early Childhood and Elementary. Before I introduce the Employee of the Month, I just want to say, when the recognized teacher or student is announced, they will join us in the front of the room for a picture. Our communications team will capture a picture of you for social media and the webpage recognition. The first being with the student, it'll be three different pictures. The first being with the student or the teacher, the superintendent and the board. The second, we ask that the nominating staff and the principal join. And our third picture, we ask for our families that are here to support and join the group. Now I have the pleasure of announcing our November Employee of the Month, Diana Adders. If she could come up, please? Diana is the Restorative Justice Coordinator at Harmon High School. And she was nominated by Brianna Wright. Brianna says she goes far above and beyond to create a more inclusive community in Harmon. She also goes above and beyond for all the students. And she would give the shirt off her back to a kid in need. She makes the school run smoothly and all feel her presence is always felt. So please congratulate me and congratulating Diana Adders as the November Employee of the Month.
Thank you, Dr. Sutherland, and congratulations. And welcome, Dr. Wilson.
Good evening. All right, here we go. Good evening, President Lopez, Vice President Drew, Superintendent Dr. Anna Stubblefield, and members of the board. It is with great pleasure I present to you our November Students of the Month. Leadership Author Tom Peters coined as a staple, what we celebrate. If we celebrate what you see, want, you'll get to see more of it. This evening, we are celebrating some outstanding students with social, emotional, and character growth, as we recognize that this acknowledges and reinforces the holistic development of our students. These students are bright examples of the qualities and values that define a well-rounded USD 500 student. Nominations for Student of the Month are completed under the following pillars. Attendance recognition, outstanding academic performance, positive behavior, commitment to service and citizenship, scholarship and/or community recognition, and outstanding athletic achievement. These students tonight and families will also be honored on December 13th at our District Excellence in Education Program in collaboration with the KCK Foundation for Excellence and Capital Federal Bank. Without further ado, I would like to introduce to you our Early Childhood Student of the Month, Bethany Thang. Bethany is a precious early childhood scholar at Bethel Early Childhood Center. She was nominated by Teacher Dorothy Betts under the pillar of service and citizenship. Bethany has shown great emotional and compassionate empathy and support to all of the younger students in the class. She spends time teaching them classroom routines, making sure to sit with them during meal times, and helping with difficult tasks. She does things such as helping students to hang up their backpacks, opening milk cartons, and holding hands during transitions. For these reasons, Ms. Betts believes that Bethany will be a great candidate to receive Student of the Month for the early childhood level. She said it is an honor to be her teacher, and I hope that social, emotional behavior she exhibits with others continues throughout her academic career in the district. Now, she's very shy, but she did tell us she's super healthy with eating. She likes pineapple, strawberries, and blueberries. She likes playing with friends. And even though she's shy, she said when she grows up, she wants to be a policewoman. Our Elementary Student of the Month, I would like to introduce to you Iker Herrera. Iker is a fifth grade student at Quandero Elementary School and is being nominated under the pillar of outstanding academics by Teacher Amy Otto. She remark, she remarks that he is the quintessential KCK student. He has near-perfect attendance, is engaged in learning, advocates for self, asks for assistance, and most importantly, challenges the teachers to teach at their highest level. He strives to push his thinking in all area of his academics. An example of this is in math, when he shares that he has solved the problem, checked it, written the answers in a sentence, explained the strategies chosen and why. Ms. Otto explains it is this level of passion that he daily, shows daily and the depth of knowledge that challenges her to be a better teacher. The goal for the month's bookkeeping competition was 150 minutes, about two and a half hours. He completed this in four days. Now he's reading to see how many minutes he can read in a month, a goal that he personally set. The best part is that he continues to help his peers rise to the challenge and join them. His excitement and passion to learn is contagious. Others look to see what he's doing and they want to join in no matter what the level. Iker is a humble, kind, helpful, patient, and a perfect example of a hard-working, strong-character student that we want out of all students in KCK. I asked him what his favorite thing to do. He said, reading a book series, I Survived, which I'm going to check out. Interestingly enough, he says he has a multitude of pets at home, comprising of fish, chickens, and a dog that he takes responsibility for. And when he goes to high school, he wants to go to Sumner Academy. Congratulations. Introducing to you our Middle School Student of the Month, DeAndre Sims. DeAndre is an eighth grade student at Sumner Academy of Arts and Sciences and is being recommended by Principal Rick Malone under the pillar of service and citizenship. Principal Malone notes that DeAndre is an outstanding eighth grader who consistently demonstrates unwavering respect, empathy, and care towards others. His genuine concern for the well-being of those around him is evident in every interaction he has. Without fail, he makes it a point to engage in meaningful conversations with staff members each day, ensuring that they are heard and valued. DeAndre's conversations are always filled with compassion, reflecting his sincere interest in the person. Not only is he a compassionate student, but also a dedicated scholar-athlete. He exemplifies the qualities of commitment, teamwork, and discipline in his pursuit of excellence, both in the classroom and on the field. Despite his busy schedule, DeAndre consistently achieves academic success, showcasing his diligence and determination. What sets him apart is the ability to create a positive environment wherever he goes. His infectious positivity and genuine kindness to uplift those around him are noticed. Through his actions, he fosters a sense of community and encourages others to be their best selves. Some fun facts about him. He wants to go to LSU or Colorado State. He says he likes playing all types of sporting video games when he's not in school. He plays football, wrestling, and track. And when he grows up, he wants to be a motivational speaker. And so I said, we're going to put a plug in for convocation with DeAndre. Also hailing from Sumner Academy of Arts and Sciences is our High School Student of the Month, Bea Thang. Bea is a senior at Sumner Academy of Arts and Sciences and is nominated by IB Career Coordinator Edward Gunter under the pillar of service and citizenship. He remarks that Bea's work on Sumner's Academy's social media pages has been far superior to anything that we've seen. He's a member of the digital media pathway and one of a few students that have taken the generosity of resources provided by the Board of Education at the tremendous instruction of our digital media teacher, Megan Schmidt. I'm still reading. I'm still reading. I'm still reading. I told him I had a lot to say. He's found passion to capture all of their academic and athletic successes behind both the camera and the computer. There is a great emphasis placed on all scholars and scholar-athletes with an in-house media day, each session to photograph students in season, and then to take magical professional sports and academic shots of the scholars in action. Bea gets recognition here, but is the first to tell others that it's a team effort at Sumner Academy and represents the investment that the board has put into career technical education and Diploma Plus. Numerous community members and spectators on social media have commented that his pictures and videos are nothing short of spectacular and a maze that is created by a student. He's one of the few pioneers in this work at Sumner Academy. Bea is passionate about the work and ensures that Sumner Academy of Arts and Science is on the forefront with a digital media presence in the Wyandotte County. Bea is a true representation of our North Star goals and outcomes. Some fun facts about him, he's already decided he is going to Johnson County Community College in film production. He said his favorite thing about Sumner is the strong academic community with friends. And also, everybody thinks he's an extrovert, but he said really, he's an ex, he's an introvert and likes to spend time to himself. So we would like to share with you a video that Bea did for the football homecoming at Sumner Academy. Congratulations. And he's definitely an example of what we want from our students graduating Diploma Plus. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. And congratulations to all of our students and those that nominated you and to your families and our teachers and staff who support you and also your fellow classmates. Congratulations to all of you. As we continue to celebrate, we will, before we take pictures, so don't go anywhere, students and families, we are going to celebrate American Education Week. And so I'd invite Ms. Samari Devon and Dom DeRosa to come to the podium as well.
Good evening, Dr. Stubblefield, President Lopez, and the Board of Education. We'd like to take a moment to read a proclamation. So whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equity. And whereas by equipping our young Americans with both the practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them the hope for and access to a productive future and...
Whereas all education employees, be they, be they teachers, counselors, library, media specialists, and aides, public library staff, instructional coaches, curriculum specialists, paraprofessionals, instructional aides, school administrative staff, custodians, health-related professionals, student service providers, maintenance, grounds, and custodial personnel, technology staff, transportation staff, nutritional services, building administrators, district administrators and staff, KCK, PSPD, substitutes, the superintendent, and school board members who work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism, and work together to provide a safe and healthy learning environment for our students.
Whereas schools are community linchpins, bringing together the adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise. Now therefore, we, as representatives of the National Education Association of Kansas City, Kansas, and the Kansas City, Kansas School District, USD 500, do hereby proclaim November 13th through the 17th as the annual observance of American Education Week, signed this date, November 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Devon, and thank you, Mr. DeRosa, board. I would actually entertain a motion to adopt this proclamation as read tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Again, thank you, Mr. DeRosa, Ms. Devon, and to all of our staff who work tires, tirelessly every day for our students. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board, we are going to take a quick recess so we can take pictures with our students and employees of the month and their families. Additionally, we had one executive session that we are going to take up while we also take after this break. So, board, I would actually entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of parties involved under coma at six o'clock for five minutes.
So moved. Second. First motion.
Thank you. Any questions or? Thank you. Any questions or further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, we are going to take a quick recess so we can take pictures with our students and employees of the month and their families. Additionally, we had one executive session that we are going to take up while we also take after this break, so, Board, I would actually entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of parties involved under coma at 6 o'clock for five minutes.
So, move.
Second.
First motion. We vote on the first motion.
Thank you. Any questions or...
Just threw him off.
We did.
Thank you. Any questions or further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, we are going to take a quick recess so we can take pictures with our students and employees of the month and their families. Additionally, we had one executive session that we are going to take up while we also take after this break, so, Board, I would actually entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of parties involved under coma at 6 o'clock for five minutes.
So, move.
Second.
First motion. We vote on the first motion.
Any questions or...
Just threw him off.
We did.
Thank you. Any questions or further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded questions. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell, Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll continue with our agenda. Next on our agenda is our community comments section of the agenda. Just as a reminder, everyone is welcome to give comment to the board, and please sign up with our board clerk the Monday before the board meeting by noon so that we can put you on the agenda. You have three minutes to speak. Please make sure you start by giving your name, and then your time will start. At the end of three minutes, we would ask that you are done with your comment, and if you have any information you would like to share, please make sure you give that to any handouts. Please give those to Ms. Smith, and she will distribute to all of the board members, and we will go from there. So our first comment, I would invite Teresa Ryan to the podium. Ms. Ryan.
Good evening, Board President Lopez, Vice President Drew, Dr. Stubblefield, and members of the board. My name is Teresa Ryan. I'm the high school lead nurse for Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. I have been a registered nurse for 20 years and an LPN for two years before that. I have been a school nurse for Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools for 15 years. My objective for speaking with you this evening is to share the importance of the school nurse role and to introduce the framework that our department uses to meet the needs of our students, family, community, and staff. I was excited to see the 2023 District Equity Strategic Framework. The National Association of School Nurses has a similar framework that our department uses. Copies of this have been provided to the board clerk for you to review. As a past vice president of the Kansas City, rather, the Kansas School Nurse Organization, and a current member of both, I confidently stand by the information I have provided. Here is how I believe our frameworks and goals align. Health Services supports the board's first goal, physical and mental health supports, by implementing the community and public health component of our framework. Health Services supports the board's second goal, academics, by implementing the care coordination component of our framework. Health Services supports the board's third goal, fiscal and facility management, by implementing the leadership component of our framework. Why is this important to optimizing educational outcomes for students? Health promotion, illness prevention, emergency response, connecting families to healthcare providers, chronic disease management, conducting health screenings, and providing social and mental health support are a few ways that licensed professional school nurses have a long-term impact on a child's school attendance and ability to learn. No other school professional has this unique opportunity to improve a child's future in so many ways. This is why education, health equity, and school nursing go hand in hand. How can the board help? Health Services requesting a Board of Education liaison to meet with us regularly to discuss our objectives, goals, and challenges. By partnering together, I am confident that we as school health professionals can support academic achievement and reduce barriers to learning. My final thought. School nurses stand in both the health and education sectors to support the well-being of children and the future health and economic vitality of our community and the nation. I look forward to speaking with you in the near future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ryan. Thank you, and we will be sure that one of the members of our administrative team will follow up with you for additional information and for your request. Thank you for coming to speak tonight. We appreciate you and all of our nurses. Next on our agenda, we will hear from Ms. Chavette Dinkins. Would invite you to the podium.
Good evening, Board. My name is Chavette Dinkins, and I work at Wyandotte High School. I have various roles at Wyandotte, but today I'm talking as a family advocate. I have been in communication with Central Office about early graduation practices since August 2021. At that time, I was told that students could not attend prom or graduate with their class as they were not students. That changed during October 2021 and was indicated on the early graduation form. My concerns with the practice is that it is not clear and the expectations in the communication differs from building to Central Office. The policy reports one thing, the process and system differs, and then the building level does something else. The process in form needs to include student voice and family engagement. The form should be available online anytime in English and Spanish. The form should have an appeal information and contact information if families have questions about the process. An MOU is a contract. Why are we asking our families to sign a contract regarding a decision that is theirs? Early graduations should be celebrated. The policy does not require a MOU or a mandatory meeting. Why will we ask our parents to sign a form and then have a meeting to discuss at a later date? Admin should not be allowed to refuse or deny early graduation. That decision is made up with the families, and per policy, it is a board function. We have students being held up or delayed due to Diploma Plus. That is not in the policy or the form. Another reason why the form needs to be available earlier for students, such is at the beginning of their junior year, so that they can have clear paths for their own decisions. When students are made to continue their education, they start to skip school, they have reduced grades, and they have an "I don't care" attitude because they know that they only need one or two credits to graduate. I have talked with administration and Central Office about half-days for job opportunities or other job training similar to Lawrence and Taconoxi. Students are promised tech in Kansas City Community College where there are not enough seats, there are not enough instructors, and the students are disappointed. Furthermore, the majority of our students qualify for the Pell Grant and will have access to free tuition after they graduate. The language is confusing. Our students attend about five to 10 area colleges. Some go far, but the majority of them do not. Most colleges do not care about seven semesters, nor do scholarship opportunities like KC Scholars. When I was in the third grade, I received a scholarship for college. My story was compelling. The funder did not have a clue of what I was going to do after college. She did not care if I graduated early, and she did not care about my plans. At the age of 17, I graduated with honors and was the first Black student to take college courses at Seward County Community College. I received a full ride from Jackson State. Jackson State did not care that I was 17 years old. My story was compelling, my GPA was high, my ACT was high, and I had the ability to write amazing essays, and that was my experience. As of August 2022, I started this conversation again. I've now been in communication with Central Office for over two years. My last email has been unanswered for nearly 30 days. I am asking the board to create a concrete policy and asking leadership to hold staff accountable for involving, for the involvement of our students and parents in this process. Unfortunately, it is easier to drop out in USD 500 than graduate early. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dinkins, for sharing tonight, and we will be sure that someone follows up with you. And tonight, Board, we do have on the agenda a conversation around early graduation policy, so that is on our agenda for tonight as well. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is our consent agenda. Would I entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded questions.
I would like to pull items I and K.
Items I and K. Ms. Humphries and Ms. Drew, could we amend your motions to reflect that? Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? If not, Ms. Smith, the motion is to approve the consent agenda item, the consent agenda minus items I and K. Roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we will take up item I first.
I don't have any comments or questions. I don't have a good understanding or clarity around this item, and so I would like to vote no on this item, but will allow the rest of my colleagues to vote how they favor.
So I, Ms. Russell and I did have a brief conversation prior to the meeting, and I was explaining that Qualtrex is the, and Dr. Conrad, you can come forward and say, Qualtrex is the data matrix, that's my terminology, that we collect all of our data, a lot of our data for, in moving to Qualtrex for our public-facing dashboard will just make, seems more seamless and consistent and allow us to provide the information in the academic report in other areas where we collect the data to give real-time data on a regular basis, not just once a quarter. So if we said we were going to update it monthly, if it made sense for some stuff to be updated weekly, we would actually be able to do that. The two departments that use it on a regular basis right now are our Diploma Plus Department and our DERA Department. So it was really, it's really us streamlining our data collection so that it can be accurate, in case anyone else was wondering.
Are there any additional questions on this item, Ms. Page? Yes.
Now, how long does this last? When will you have to change it again?
It will be an annual renewal, like, I mean, we, you approved the other proportion earlier in the year. It was just after internally, we looked at what was needed in order to make our data more accessible to the public, but also internally to staff that may need it at different times. This would streamline it.
And I will just say that my no is more, while she explained that to me, and I understand those components, it does say "public-facing," and so in my mind, I would like to know how that public-facing feature works. I asked the question around the analytics and the workflow of the Infinite Campus, where at a previous meeting, we were told that I would, as a parent, be able to access Infinite Campus instead of calling in. It said it was implemented, but I don't see that feature here. So I have an internal issue with just the implementation of things that we continue to purchase, and if they actually are implemented and enacted with fidelity on top of, we're also still paying for another service as well. And so all of that, in my mind, brings me a sense of pause, and I just need more time to understand before I can be in support of an additional purchase of something else, so.
Oh, can Mr. Conrad answer that question? Is she raised?
Yes, so the question being...
So maybe the question is, so Infinite Campus, I believe in June or July, it was asked, can we add this workflow? It'll help with attendance tracking. So instead of me having to call someone, I would be able to go into the app and do it. I followed up around the test scores and assessments piece. So all of those things that I was told previously would be features, public-facing features, again, are not. But in our responses to the questions today, it said those things had happened already. I'm a parent, and I cannot access any of those features. And so that it brings the question, the longer-winded question of where are we in processes? And so, yes, it may be implemented, but not all pieces. Well, you're asking me to pay for, buy something else. And so I guess that was my question. But I think it's longer than what you may be able to provide tonight.
Yeah, and I can just briefly touch on, there's two things here. The first is the implementation of the process, and then the second is the need, especially for the public-facing. And so that first, on the process of implementation, we did get campus analytics and workflow implemented on our side, and now we need to turn around and make sure that it is deployed publicly. So in answer to your earlier question, yes, that has been turned on, it has been integrated. Now we're just making sure that it's rolling out. To the second point is going to be public-facing. So all of our data that we currently have, it's student data. There's personally identifiable information in there that we cannot share publicly. Most of the information systems that we buy are for internal use, and they have specific restrictions on it, so that it's role-based access. And so depending on your role, you get certain access. If you're a teacher, you get access to certain students that are assigned to you, and administrator likewise. We can't do public-facing with any of these tools because there isn't a way to like aggregate that data up and not make it, you know, violating FERPA or PII. And so we need a system, if we're going to be public-facing, if it's going to be something that the community can engage with or board members can engage with, we have to suppress the PII portions of that, the FERPA portions of that. And specific programs do that and others do not. They are specifically designed for internal use, and this one is specifically designed for that external facing. And so when charged with providing public-facing information, we just had to be able to choose how we go about that process and what vendor could do it. And Qualtrex is one that we already utilize. Five Labs is one that is internal-facing, and it's not public-facing, and it will not suppress that information. And so that's why we're asking for an additional piece that can be public-facing, because it will suppress that information, so we're not releasing information out there in the world that we shouldn't.
Thank you. Additional questions for Dr. Conrad or comments on this item?
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve item I.
Second.
And there is a second. Additional comments or questions? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, no.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, no.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item is item K. Next agenda item is item K.
Yeah, also not a question or comment, I mean, not a question, more a comment. This is an item that we brought up before, professional development, travel, or the conversation around it. I have gotten a couple of questions from community members, so I thought I would just, before approving this document today, put it in the air of maybe we could look at adding purpose as one of the columns within the documents. The questions are really around why are staff traveling this much? And I know that we all know, like, some of it's grant-related, some of it's position-specific, some of it's PD opportunities. I am a strong believer in professional development, but like, if we can somehow figure out a way to share that information so it doesn't look like one said group of individuals are going on training, I know when questions have come up amongst the board, some of it, most of it oftentimes is because of grants or the nature of job position. So just if we can internally think about how potentially we could share that information with the public, I would welcome that. Nothing that has to be solved in the next day or two, but just a conversation to continue to be had.
Clarification, the intended outcomes, we want more explanation in that column?
So I think, like, something such as budget, so someone like myself, I could look at the budget numbers and go back and look and see where it's coming from, or I could go back and look at, and I'm sorry, Megan, Dr. Megan Cook, she goes on trips because it's early childhood grant required based on the MOU that we have signed. And so, but it may, in some perceptions, it may look like she travels a lot, but there are multiple things as Director of Early Childhood that she has to attend. Does that make sense?
Okay, I was just looking at the intended outcomes for the conscious discipline travel. It says, learn about the different forms of anger, including the specific form that is, like, intensifying due into today's high-stress, high-speed environment.
And I think those are more internal, so when you're asking your supervisor, you're saying, what is the purpose of you going? I think for me, it's more of the purpose of why the dollars are being spent. And maybe there are two in this thing.
I think I understand what you're saying, under purpose, like, required for head start, required for title, aligned with whatever, or paid for by, because sometimes it's paid for by an outside entity.
Yeah.
And then, or, yeah.
That column.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'll follow up with what I asked for six months ago, that most of the majority of the board did not agree. There should be something there to say, when you return, how are you going to strengthen either your position, the student outcome, or something? And that is very consistent to what academia does. Now, if I suggest that if you're willing to consider one aspect, I suggest we're willing to consider how it will impact our students or one's professional development or one's position here. And if one thing is important to the community, it all is involved with how we are spending our dollars.
So, Dr. Nguyen, I think our attempt, and we obviously probably missed the mark, and the intended outcome, was to address what you're saying. So if, listening to you today, if that column is not doing that, some, as I'm reading through, some specifically say employees will return with knowledge around counselor's role and services to be, but tying it specifically to student outcomes and/or the operations that it's linked to may, if I'm hearing you right, is the next step to add to.
You're hearing me partially.
Okay.
Because that other half would say, I'm getting the knowledge, when I come home, what am I doing with the knowledge?
Okay.
I'm going to implement it with measurable outcomes, or I'm going, you'll be able to see the results, and you'll have to determine what you're going to do with it before you go, before it's approved.
No.
Again, this is not inconsistent with academia.
Ms. Clark.
Dr. Nguyen, before you started speaking, here's where my brain went to, and correct me if I'm wrong, just trying to keep us consistent in some of our language that we're using, would it tie back, do you take this and whatever the travel is and tie it back to one of our goals? That's, I mean, and then from there comes the explanation, but it ties back to a goal versus having all these different reasonings that you kind of have to connect the dots? You follow what I'm saying?
Well, at the end of the day, all of our goals should circle back to the student achievement and to the professional development of the.
Completely agree, but we have separate, we will separate them out, or they are separated out into various categories, and so that's where my question comes to. You're right, it rolls up to one goal, but how does it fit into the board's goals or?
And I think that's a little bit what they do in those, in that theme piece, so maybe it's adding goal and you're putting the number of goal and still, because what I also hear maybe is like when you go into a workshop and they're like, this is what you're going to get out of this workshop session. Before you're going on a conference, you're saying, this is what I'm going to get out of attending this conference, and this is what I'm going to bring back to benefit USD 500. If the conference meets your expectations, to be determined, but at least you know going in, or we know that this is said, world languages, I'm going because we want to expand world language access, or, and then my goal is to bring back new instructional strategies.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions? Now, I would entertain a motion to approve item K, the travel approvals.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
I'm going to say no because this is what we always do. We talk, but we don't do anything. So you approve this with no definitive what you're going to do to address the conversation. So I'll vote no for that reason.
Thank you. Motion carries. And to circle back on that, my, what I heard was that Dr. Stubblefield had heard the conversation tonight and was going to try to beef up some of that information. So my understanding, if I'm not correct, is that Dr. Stubblefield will work with staff to make sure we try to cover some of the feedback that we heard tonight from board members and bring that back and see if it's, if it meets what the feedback was from the board.
Correct.
Thank you.
Go on her Friday report?
Well, we'll update, I mean, I'll go with the team, update the form, and then add the pieces to streamline it, yes.
Thank you.
But we'll put in the, into the week when the form is updated, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda item is item number seven. We will hear from the library director, Ms. Carol Levers.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Board. Good evening, Dr. Stubblefield. Just some highlights of fall events at KC KPL. I'll try and go through that as fast as I can. We had the Fall Fest at the Turner Community Gardens on October 12th, and we had 258 people attending. Our Halloween Glow Party at South Branch on October 19th was fantastic, and we had over 200 people there. We had, sorry, Trunk or Treat at Mr. and Mrs. Ethel Schlegel. Wonderful day, weather was good on October 21st, and we had 400 people. That, to me, blew my mind, people all the way to Ethel Schlegel to enjoy that. Then we had another trunk or treat at the West Wyandotte Library. We even had a little goat that you could feed there. That was October 24th, and we had 807 people come through. And then we had a trunk of treat at the main library. This Rachel Russell was also there.
You know, I was waiting for the comment part. I was like, listen, it's life-changing.
The big attraction was the train, you know? We had to put some fencing around that because people just wanted to get on that train, but they had to stand in line, and we had almost 1,000 people just for that evening.
Bigger and better every year.
Yeah.
My team, by the time I got there, after I left here, they were like, we don't have any candy. I was like, oh.
Yeah. It's just fascinating. And then the Day of the Dead at our South Branch Library was November 2nd, and we had over 200 people there. Very fantastic as well to see those dances and all that. No, Day of the Dead Parade, the library also took part, they had a float there, and that was November 4th. I'm not saying that we had 17,000 people, but according to CABA, there were 17,000 people there, so just to let you know that we paraded in front of 17,000 people. Fantastic, too. So I want to share some upcoming winter events because we just have one more board meeting, but I wanted to let you know, we have the dance coming up, and we are featuring the Kansas City Kansas Jazz Orchestra. We didn't have them before, not before, you know, during COVID, we stopped that because we just didn't want anything to happen. So we're going to start this year. Hopefully, everybody feels closeted and they want to get out. So grab your dancing shoes and your best retro outfit to swing the night away with some holiday tunes. And that will be December 2nd at the main library at 7:00 PM. And the community really looks out forward for that, so you'll hear that. So upcoming holiday events at our library, I'm not going to go through all, I'm just going to do the highlighted. Diwali-themed bilingual storytime, that will be at the South Library November 9th. Natural Winter Reads, they're going to make at Schlegel, November 16th, anybody interested? Forest Bathing, Schlegel, November 18th. I wondered what Forest Bathing is, but if people want to come and just be in one with nature, that, you know, you come that day to the Schlegel Library, spend nature to de-stress for the holidays. Then we have Adult Adventures, that's the Star Lab at Schlegel, November 27th. Santa Letter, Taking Home Crafts at the West Library, so you can bring your kids and then bring it back, the letter to Storytime on December 9th, when Santa will be at the library. Turner Takeout Crafts, Holiday Open House with Santa, and that's a pet-friendly program. Hanukkah themed bilingual story, Craft Time at the South, December 7th. Storytime with Santa, as I've just mentioned before. And then the Holiday Craft Camp will be at West, December 10th. And then you can rap, chat, and craft West, at West Wyandotte, December 11th. That's teaching kids our wrapping, you know, there will be a wrapping paper station, crafts for children, and hot chocolate. And of course, Star Wars, our holiday special, South, December 13. Own School Thursdays, that's the snowflake sun catcher signs at the main library. Our STEM Monday, that's the holiday edition, at the main library, December 18th. Gift Wrapping Party at Main, December 19th. Grinch Mass Party at South, December 23rd, where we'll read the Dr. Seuss classic. And then Kwanzaa Storytime and Craft, South, December 28. So that's for the next month. Questions?
There's no New Year's Eve party? I just wanted to clarify.
It's a lot.
Ms. Russell, you can plan that if you want.
Yeah.
We'll nominate you.
We know.
As long as Ms. Carol's giving me some money, I could do anything.
We know who to call. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levers, motion to approve the library director's report.
Some move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, seeing none. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Our next agenda item, Board, this item has come before us several times. It is up for potential action if the Board so chooses. It is the MOU at the Library Foundation. So are there any questions, discussion? I see Ms. Levers coming back to the podium if there's any additional information needed. Yes, Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. And Mr. Goheen, I'd like to ask that you look at item 15 concerning payroll deduction. The way I see it, I do not believe the employee has an option, the way that it is written currently. Is that correct?
I think it's meant, I think it's meant to be, if there's a charitable deduction to the library, that it would be through a payroll deduction. And we could change that language if the Board would prefer, let's see, how should we word that?
Well, I just believe, and I think I've expressed this before to the, to the Board, that the employee should have the option to either use payroll deduction from the district that goes directly to the charitable campaign or not, but not that it is, as it says, for any library-wide charitable that are facilitated through a payroll deduction, all library employee donations will be directed.
We take out will and make it may, does that do it, do you think?
As long as the employee has an option.
I think it does.
Okay.
I think if we, I think if we change that will to may. Paragraph 15.
And I'm sorry, maybe this is me asking not a question that makes sense, or I don't have enough information. How does this impact the solicitation? Is this only for giving campaigns for the foundation? Because our most recent solicitation says that a boss can't ask you to be, but the last piece says as otherwise designated by the executive director. And those are, would still be employees.
So I know this was taken from the, or patterned after what we have with our Foundation for Excellence, and the purpose of this paragraph is designed to allow for payroll deductions if employees want to give to either foundation. I think this was intended when it says except is otherwise designated.
So I would maybe remove.
I think you just remove that, that last clause, don't you think?
I was going to say, we're going to fix will to may, and potentially, if the Board is all in agreement, the words after except.
Yeah, except through director.
Yes.
So again, changing will to may and removing period after foundation, removing except through director. How does the Board feel about that potential change? Is there any opposition to that change?
I'm happy to make the motion to approve the library MOU with the designated changes as directed.
Just say to paragraph 15.
To paragraph 50.
Second.
Moved and seconded. The motion again for clarification to approve the MOU with those designated changes made to paragraph, or section 15. Additional discussion?
I had another one, another question. Where are the, where are the funds? Where are the, um, where are the funds deposited? And what kind of reporting is there to the board? Help me find it if I didn't, if I overlooked it, please.
Uh, the, the funds would be, if funds are raised, they would be deposited in accounts for the foundation. So it does, I don't think it specifically says where they're deposited. I thought we had a provision here for a board report. Let's look and see.
Great. Just for clarification, so the foundation would give the board an update? The Library Foundation would give an update to the board? Or the library?
To the library.
Whatever, if, I mean, if the board wants a report to the board on an update, I mean, that's, they certainly could have that. I thought that we had a provision here for a updated report. Let's see real quick.
There's a provision for an audit, but I didn't see the provision for a regular reporting. Are you aware of where it is? Could you help us?
No, I don't think there is a reporting requirement in the MOU for us to report back to the board. Although, what we would be doing is reporting regularly and working with the library. And it would be appropriate for her to report that to the board on her regular reporting.
Item 36 does share about grants awarded to the library. There would be reports.
I'm skimming here. I'm getting there, I'm just trying to make sure I'm missing something for that.
And I also see in 34, the donations and, um, acceptance or rejection. Need donation, that sentence doesn't make all the way sense. In accordance with Board Policy KH. So there's some type of, so I think.
The board always retains the right to accept or reject the donation. So if you had like a directed donation that came in that the board didn't want to accept, they can do that. That's what your Board Policy KH says, yeah. I mean, I think what you could do, if you wanted to add to 36, um, there's a report to their grants. I think you could add in, i- if you wanted to report on, uh, you know, fundraising activities and grants. I mean, you could, you could add it there, I suppose. If you wanted to.
Could we just, similar to how we do with the foundation, could we just ask for an overall library? Would that be appropriate just to say, KCP, KCKPS, school board requests a annual organization report? I mean, directly.
Well, I mean, y- you got a couple of different things going on here. One is that, you know, the foundation is raising money, but they're raising money as the foundation. And so, um, they don't have any legal obligation to report. Obviously, grants are different because those are monies that are being given to the school district. But, you know, what, what you could do is you could have a, um, you know, a provision in here to, um, have some sort of annual or quarterly or some other.
I guess that's why I use the word request. So like, yes, we would like it, but if it doesn't happen, it's not like we're requiring it. Or is that different than what you would like?
Well, the point is, as we sat here and enjoyed the experiences going to Europe, we were unaware. And other things, other things we've been unaware that you have helped us substantially with professional development, things like that. So if there's not a negative to this, but more of a positive that we, we welcome. But we, we want to, in my opinion, I guess, give you more accolades that you are helping. We have no clue you are. And that's, that's, that, that's the incentive from, from the reporting part, that they provide a valuable role. We are clueless as to, and that's my term. Though maybe you all know. But, but those, those experiences that the library staff could not have had if it weren't for the foundation's help.
Well, we appreciate any of the accolades that we can get.
We just don't know that it's happening. And it, and if there's some type of reporting, if it's annual, there's some type of reporting, and this is not a request. This, this is, I'm suggesting, we should know what the library is receiving. Not we demand from the foundation what they're spending. But we should know what the library is receiving.
Well, it's been my experience that Carol has in her report, uh, giving credit to the foundation for the grants that we have provided in the past.
And again, w- w- we are, we, we're thankful because we haven't done it. But this is what I'm just saying, if it's not specified, we have no clue.
Yeah, on, on number 36, uh, the middle of the paragraph says the president, and that's referring to the, um, foundation president. Will report all grants awarded to the library and the foundation to the executive director. And the executive director is Carol Levers. So I, I think this document does indicate there's a communication piece between the foundation via the president to the executive director of the library, who of course then reports to the board.
Well, i- i- in your opinion, if that is what is, is clearly the, um, the action, then that word would be shall, not will.
That's, uh, that, that's fine.
Good, okay. That gives you a little bit to work with, Mr. Goheen.
So shall to will in 36, the president.
And that then would not be a request, it would be a requirement. But that then the president would know, the, the foundation, the board would know all grants that had been awarded to the library, clearly. And you may want to put annual in there, so it's not every month.
Yeah, we can do that.
Just an annual.
36 has, is it 36 that we're looking at?
It is.
Okay.
Can we circle back to 15 just for a very quick second, just because I want to make sure? So the part that was removed was, um, except otherwise designated by the executive director. And so my question around that is, um, I'm not really sure, like, I think about history, like, why was this placed here? And is there ever a time where an exception needs to be made that needs to be considered in this?
No.
I don't think this was a historical document. I think, I think this document was created in part, um, sort of pirating provisions from our, uh, MOU with the Foundation for Excellence.
Got it, okay.
So I, I, I think this is intended to be a formalization of the relationship between the library foundation and, or not formalization, but at least laying, laying that out a little more cleanly.
Okay.
Think this language, if you're seeing language, it looks odd. It's because I think it's coming from that Foundation for Excellence MOU.
Okay, thank you very much.
But you understand it says may.
Yes, 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 thank you.
So back on the, um, reporting, I mean, so I, I think there's just a couple of things on this reporting piece that, um, on 36. So I, I think it's perfectly fine if you guys want to have the president of the foundation shall report all grants awarded to the library and the foundation to the executive director. Obviously, the executive director needs to know if there's grants being given to the, to the library. And then, I don't know that it belongs in the MOU, but certainly, uh, the executive director of the library is an employee of the board. So I think you would just, I think the board would just add that to Ms. Levers' annual reporting to the board as to what grants have been received by the foundation, which I think she includes anyway. But I think you would formalize that in an expectation of the board to your executive director, rather than that having been an obligation in the MOU would be, I think, how you would do this. So the obligation would be for the foundation to report that information to the executive director. And the board's expectation would clearly be to Ms. Levers to, uh, provide that as part of an annual report to the board. Or quarterly or whatever the board decides they want to do on that. I think it's how I would frame this out.
And I just have a question now that you say it that way. Grants that are co-collaborated on still come before this board, before they're approved, similar to any other grant process? Or that's different in this scenario?
Well, if, if the foundation's seeking a grant, that does not go through an approval process with the district. If it's a collaborated grant, um, I think it depends on who the granting, granting agency is. So, you know, the district, leaving the library aside, there's a lot of, uh, grant programs that we're involved with that, that we are probably not the grant recipient for. Uh, although the grant funds may ultimately come to the school district and it would be reported as such to the board in that context. Is that what you mean? I don't want to answer your question wrong if I'm misunderstanding.
I think so.
Let me ask you, what I understand you're saying, if the library and the foundation seek a grant, are you suggesting, are, are you suggesting that if the library alone sought a grant, the board would have to approve it?
Mm-hmm.
So, so because they are jointly seeking a grant, does the board have to have any, any input? That's your question.
Yeah, I think just like any other, um, um, department of the school district that if you have a grant application or grant request that is, that is ma- being made by the school district, whether it's partnering up or not, I mean, ultimately that is gonna have to have board approval at some level. At some point, at some point.
What's your answer to her?
I'm, I'm.
Yes, it's consistent?
I'm, I'm still on track.
Or no, because they are in collaboration with the foundation, they do not have to come back and ask the?
Well, the, the foundation would not have to come back.
So you're saying, if I, if we are not the fiscal response.
Foundation never has to come back.
If we're not the. If we're not the fiscal agent, we're not seeing that grant application? That's what you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. If we're, if we're not, if we're not the fiscal agent on it, that's not our grant. If we are, then it is. It doesn't matter whether it's the library or whether it's at Star or whether it's some other, uh, building in the district.
But if we're a named partner in a grant that someone else is going after, which I, my immediate thought goes to like someone like KU, Gear Up, where dollars don't ever come here, but the impact touches what we do, so we then have an MOU. So I, I'm going down a stream that I'm not wanting to go down today, but I'm just thinking about those pieces.
Rabbit hole to be determined.
I, I think, I think there's a difference between the district, which includes the library being the applicant, and one where we're the beneficiary. I think those are two different things.
Okay.
So are we wanting to change the will to shall? Is that what's being?
That's what's been proposed.
Mr. Goheen, can you clarify the current motion? And it sounds like there might be an amendment to the motion potentially.
My understanding, the current motion is that we would approve, the motion is to approve the MOU with a modification to paragraph number 15 to change the word will to may and to delete the language, uh, at the end of the, that section, starting with the word except and ending with the word director. And then, that's what the current motion is. Then there was a discussion about paragraph 36 and about changing the word, um, will to shall. And there was also a discussion about adding the word annual in there. Um, so I don't know if you need the word annual in there or not, but you could, you could say, the president shall report all grants awarded to the library and the foundation to the executive director on an annual basis, but may want to.
Well, you already said you didn't want that in there. And that since the library and, since the exec director, library has an annual reporting requirement, it takes care of that. So less words is best.
I agree with that. I think that's the right.
We just need to change that word from will to shall on number 36.
That's what the board wants to do.
Is there opposition to that? Is that what the board would like to see? Okay, so the two folks who made the motion and the amended motion, you'd be agreeable, agreeable to amending your motion again, I think? Is that correct, Mr. Goheen? You add?
Yeah, I, I think as, as long as everybody, as long as the two people that are involved in the motion, the motion and the second agree, that's okay with that, we're good to go.
We agree.
And they both agree. Additional discussion or questions?
So just, just so everyone's clear, it is
One Motown.
The, the MOU, as modified, for paragraph 15 to change will to may and to delete the words or the phrase from the word except to the word director. And then paragraph 36 to change the word, uh, will to shall.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Elonda Clark.
Elonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Good work, everybody. Thank you. All right, we will continue with our agenda, item number eight. Uh, board first up on this item, we will hear an update from Hollison Miller. So we'd invite you to the podium. Good evening. Thank you for sticking with us tonight.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Well, good evening, guys. We are here this evening to provide an update on the master plan process. Um, it's been about a month since we were here at the beginning of October to share a status update. So we're gonna quickly run through where we're at in the process, give a quick recap of the most recent Community Vision Team meeting. And then we're gonna dive into one of the options we're currently exploring with the Facility Vision Team and the Community Vision Team. We are definitely at a place in the process where no decisions have been made, but we are still really digging in and trying to understand all the pros and cons to several different options to make sure that we're identifying a path or several paths forward that make the most sense for the district. And then we'll wrap up here in a second with, um, just looking ahead to what the next, next pieces are gonna be here over the next month. Um, before we come back to you at the December board meeting, um, in that afternoon work session. So as we've talked about before, we started this process over the, um, basically started back in February, March with identifying this overall process, looking at trying to, um, get our final report and recommendation to the board before the end of the year to allow you guys time to process and, um, make decisions on what you want to adopt or what you want to move forward with. So we are kind of right on that cusp of the end of step four and straddling into step five. So we're kind of still exploring a little bit of those options, refining those options. And then really about to dive into that, adopt a plan or recommendation here as we move into December, the end of November and into December. So as you guys are probably aware, we have had, um, two really great, great Community Vision Team meetings over the last two months. And a lot of what we shared with them about a week and a half ago was what you're gonna see tonight as a summary. Um, and that same information was shared previously with the Facility Vision Team. So again, that, that cyclical nature of sharing the information first with the Facility Vision Team, taking their input, making some adjustments, taking that to the Community Vision Team. Same thing here tonight, we've taken all that information we've heard from both the Facility Vision Team and the Community Vision Team. Kind of morphing that together as to our snapshot in time. So there's, again, this is not kind of the final resolution, there's still some other options being explored that'll go back to the Facility Vision Team and Community Vision Team before we come back to you next month. and community vision team before we come back to you next month. But those last couple conversations, so jumping ahead a little bit, so I won't kind of go to the end since you guys haven't seen all this information yet, but we had some really great conversation with those. There was about, about twenty people at the last community vision team, and we were able to look at both the feeder diagrams, your cluster, your current feeders and cluster diagrams. We were able to look at some potential options of project scopes and bundles from our last conversation with that group and really start to talk about some potential challenges or opportunities that would come with each of those options. And we're going to share kind of that option tonight that looks at how to achieve kind of the majority of those goals. There's going to be some things that we haven't quite flushed out yet and some things that we need to explore further. But we're going to share one option for some feeder adjustments tonight as well as three options for some scopes or bundles of projects to look at adopting over the next five to ten years from a priority standpoint. So we're going to dive right into our feeder diagrams or what we talk about, kind of those cluster organizations of each of the high school feeders and talk about some of the things that we've uncovered through this process that are both challenges and some things that are opportunities looking forward.
Hey, hello. I'm going to walk you through the feeder diagrams today. And we've been working with the FET and CBT on a proposed option to show you all today, but I'm going to start with the basics first. So y'all may not have, may have seen this or not, so I'll cover a high level of-
Sorry, would you mind just pulling the mic down a little bit more?
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll cover the high level of what you need for today's presentation. If you look closer at the numbers, if you need to look closer at the numbers, this information is all in your board packet. So we'll start with the building types. The early childhood is in orange square. The elementary schools are green circles. Middle schools are blue rectangles, and then the high schools are purple triangles. There's a lot of information here that can be tracked through the feeder diagrams, such as the number of learners going in and out of the buildings and the totals overall. But today, I just want you to look at this number here, which is the capacity of the school, and this number here, which is the current enrollment. As we move through the diagrams, you'll also see us start to add in these halos here that designate over and under capacity. So this is your current feeder diagram. The top one is this year's numbers and the bottom one is projected RSP numbers for 2027. I know it's hard to distinguish at this scale, but this breaks down each feeder into, each feeder into the high school cluster. And then on the far right, we have the remainder of the KCK buildings, so we can track changes. The big takeaway from these numbers is that district's enrollment is trending downward. So this is a larger look at the current versus feeder enrollment trends. As you can see, the Harmon capacity writes itself, while Argentine and Rosedale and New Stanley fall under capacity. And then here, Wellborn and Stony, Stony Point North fall under capacity, and then Central writes itself, while Carl Bruce and Yandotte remain over capacity. All right, so now we're going to jump into the proposed option. What we, what we took here was, what we took in, that's happening in the feeder diagrams, is that we're looking at the over and under capacities, coupled with the assessment scores, building age, travel distance and barriers, and then we studied the current capacity trends. All of these started to inform changes that could happen to the overall district. Some of the challenges we noted were three elementary schools that were crossing major barriers to get to their middle school. So we, we proposed John Fisk to Argentine, so kids didn't have to cross the third, cross thirty-five to get to Rosedale. Francis Willard to Central, so kids didn't have to cross seventy and the river to get to Argentine. And then Grant either to Central or Carl, so kids didn't have to cross both thirty-five, seventy, and the river to get to Rosedale. So this is a larger version of the proposed feeder, just to get a sense of the moves and consolidations taking place. For the purpose of this conversation, we're only reviewing the four main clusters. We have started to denote here the lighter green for the schools that are moving clusters so we can keep track of them. And then we've added in red stars to denote the schools that were, that were replaced anytime in the two thousands, so we can start to track equity across the district. The schools targeted for replacement and consolidation were among those that scored the lowest on assessments and had also a low or a high capacity. So let's jump to the Harmon cluster. There are two things going on here. You, you will see the consolidation of schools and replacements and some cluster adjustments. So for the school consolidations, we have Emerson and New Stanley on the Emerson site. We have Noble Prentice in Silver City on the Noble Prentice site. And then TA Edison being absorbed into Frank Rushton, which also will require some, some boundary shifts south of the river to help with that capacity. And then Argentine gets rebuilt on the Silver City site and Grant gets moved over to Yandotte. There is also a potential for a combining of Argentine and Rosedale if capacity keeps dropping. And you will realize that this leaves Willard in place. We have studied several options trying to move Willard, and it created a domino issue of effects. So there's no space for it in Yandotte where it wants to be. So we entertained moving it over to Gloria Willis and Schlegel, but then that created more overcrowding issues. So this option currently leaves it in place, but we are welcome to further discussion. And we're not just taking it off the table, we just wanted more time to kind of flush it out. So now we have the Schlegel feeder. As you will notice here, Hazel Grove, West Park, Gloria Willis, all got replaced in the last bond, so the only thing happening here is the consolidation of Eugene Ware and Lindberg on the Eugene Ware site. In the Washington cluster, Quindarrow moves from Yandotte in order to free up space for Grant. This puts Washington over capacity and in addition, could be considered for phase one, or you could wait to see if the capacity still trends downward, in which case by 2020 it would be under its threshold. In the Yandotte cluster, Grant moves over to get their kids back closer to a middle school. Quindarrow moves out to get Eisenhower, to Eisenhower in order to make room for Grant. And then Central will be rebuilt either on its current site or on a new site. That is still to be determined. ME Pearson and Whittier both get additions to replace their mobiles, and Yandotte remains over capacity quite far into the future, so we're recommending a eight classroom addition at this time. So this shows, this shows a recap of all the moves and consolidations I just talked about. Some of you, some you may be on board with, some might need further discussion. So this is just a snapshot of where we are now. We're continuing to work through these with the FET and CBT and have a boardwork session scheduled with you in November, in December. The current feeder diagram here shows the current capacities and the current proposed options. Our goal has been to alleviate stress at overcrowded schools, combine under capacity schools, and balance the district overall. You can see by the number of halos that disappear between the two feeders that we are accomplishing that with this proposal. And now Megan will walk you through the master plan options.
All right, so with, with those feeder diagram options, if you guys remember back to the last board meeting, we shared kind of an overall assessment of district needs over the next ten years that have been identified through those assessment reports. And then we also started to share some bundles of projects or scopes that, that will be needed, that either fall into those consolidation of schools, additions, deferred maintenance, other type of projects. So as a quick reminder, we identified close to $900 million, about $875 million worth of needs during the facility assessments, community servant staff surveys earlier this year. And obviously, those, those numbers continue to increase over time as we see some of the high levels, levels of inflation that have been occurring over the last three to five years with COVID and other economic challenges that we faced. And this was a refresher of just kind of how far dollars go today versus back in 2015, 2016, when the last long-range planned facility, master plan was done, that even if you accomplish 250-plus million dollars over five to seven years, that's actually reducing the amount of need that you actually have moving forward. So the longer, the more that we can accomplish quickly to get some of the deferred maintenance and facility needs upgraded, that will help reduce the overall cost long-term. Obviously, it's, it's a little painful to see how much more things are costing today, but knowing that things are continuing to increase, that does paint the picture as we move forward. So as we've talked about this whole time, our goal for recommendations in this final phase is to really focus on the next ten years. And typically, how we do that is to chunk that off into five-year, five-year phases for a manageable amount of scope, both that the district can manage from a facility standpoint and also then, obviously, that's a lot of dollars to, to understand where finances can come from. So that's kind of the next step. So we're not going to talk a lot about kind of where the dollars come from tonight. We know that's a critical piece and something that we're going to have to dive into here to know how we can start to implement some of this plan. Today, we're going to focus on kind of those priorities and needs and, and option or two of how that can be possibly taken care of over the next ten to fifteen years. So again, we're going to focus on those first ten years, but as you start to see some of the report come out next month, we are going to even share a glimpse into that ten to fifteen-year range to just knowing that the level of need and how quickly some of that, that can be accomplished. So we are going to kind of straddle that line as well. So with that, we're going to share three options tonight that talk about the priorities that have been established and the needs established to date. These are, these are some large numbers. We know we're looking at ranges from three to 400 million dollars that are coming from those individual bundles we shared last time, that each ranged from anywhere from 2 million to up to 120 million in a singular, a little bug flying on my face, sorry about that, that were in each of those individual line items. So a few commonalities you're going to see across all three of these options. If you remember, one of our planning priorities was to eliminate mobile classrooms and right-sized buildings. So all of these options are showing, replacing the mobile classrooms with either additions or, as Kate just mentioned, trying to balance capacity at schools to eliminate the need for those at some of the schools. We're also including bundles nine to thirteen, which were all of those building upgrades and deferred maintenance, again, to try and protect those investments, get those things taken care of before we invest in some of the other things. A few items to note here as we run through the bundles really quickly. None of these do include bundle four, which was the elementary school gym or multipurpose room additions. And the reason for that was, was twofold. One, some of the sites that do not have a second, second common space or a gym just physically do not have the available space on their sites to support that. So while that might be a long-term goal, on their current sites, if they are not relocated, they just physically cannot support that without creating more negative impact, either site circulation, parking, drop-off, or available place space. And then the second piece of that is, some of these schools that don't have that separate gym from their commons, some of those are schools that we'd be looking at in either phase two, either are taken care of in phase one with the consolidations Kate just talked about, or would be looking at for phase two. So trying to tackle them through a consolidation or replacement versus adding on to some of those facilities. And then currently, bundle six A and four, which was the district athletic complex, are not included in these. There is, however, dollars, bundle six, six in its essence, that cover high school and middle school athletic improvements. Conversations to date have focused on improving the athletic facilities at the high schools' individual sites and middle schools versus a consolidated athletic complex. And then finally, right now, one of the bundles was about additional funding for a potential main library support. Right now, that's not in one of these, but it is, again, none of these have been final decisions. These are still all on the table. So with that, I'm going to start with our baseline option, and it seems a little out of order, but we are going to start kind of right in the middle. And this first option is 360 million dollars. And the reason we landed on this number is as we worked through these projects and priorities, these were identified based on the planning priorities, FET input and CBT input as kind of those initial must haves or things that we felt like were the highest priority to tackle within the next five years. Obviously, this is a big number and something that's going to have to be understood of what, what type of investment is feasible within five years. But so we're going to start here and then we're going to work our way down and up to kind of, to look at some different options. So this one, as you're going to see here, has the rebuild of two middle schools. It has the rebuild of three elementary schools to consolidate six existing elementary schools. So this is following right along with those feeder adjustments that we just looked at. Again, eliminates the mobiles at all the schools, provides about 25 million dollars for athletic improvements at the middle school and high school levels, and about 12 million dollars for auditorium upgrades, along with all of those other deferred maintenance pieces. So I'm going to run through those really quickly because those are the bundles we looked at last time. But included in this 360 million is replacing Argentine, the consolidation of Noble Prentice and Silver City, and then the consolidation of Emerson and New Stanley. Also, the rebuild of Central and the consolidation of Lindberg and Eugene Ware. And then, as Kate mentioned, classroom additions at Whittier, ME Pearson, and Yandotte is what's currently within this bundle. Mentioned the 25 million dollars for high school and middle school athletics. That includes two additional gyms at Harmon and Schlegel to get a second gym at each of the high schools, existing gym renovations at the other high schools that aren't getting a second gym, and then outdoor practice and competition athletic facility upgrades at both middle schools and high schools where sites allow those improvements to happen. That 12 million dollars we talked about for high school and middle school auditorium improvements, including seating, lighting, rigging, that sort of thing, based on the need at each individual building, varies a little bit there. Bundle eight was the six and a half million dollars for flexible furniture and technology upgrades across the district. So that would be an allowance at each of those buildings. Again, not necessarily to go in and replace all of the furniture at each building, but to kind of start that process and upgrade some of the spaces that the kids are using. Bundle nine was accessibility upgrades, so looking at a few facilities that don't currently have an elevator and then other accessibility improvements across the district. Bundle 10 is special education upgrades. So those needs are always evolving and changing, so this includes an allowance for upgrades at elementary, middle, and high schools within each cluster to make sure that we're providing different enough opportunities within each of the clusters and learning levels. Bundle 11 was interior environment upgrades. Again, that was a high priority from a planning priority and survey standpoint, really that refresh of paint finishes, ceilings, carpet, to get that kind of new feeling to buildings. And then we've got about 40 million dollars in deferred maintenance. This is all the things, roofs, HVAC, plumbing, restrooms, some playground updates, and some concrete repairs at North Central Support Building. And then finally, the last two pieces included in this baseline option were some high school pool improvements, upgrades at the current three high school pools, and then some dollars for some renovation and/or addition to Transportation South. The two transportation facilities are a little tight on space right now and amenities for support staff. So as I mentioned, this is kind of our, our middle baseline option right now is hitting at 360 million with all those projects we just talked about. So with that, oops, sorry about that. So with that, we know that we need to kind of start to look at where, where, where dollars and priorities can align. So we've stepped that down. So looking at a 300 million dollar option, this is essentially all of the same things that were in that baseline option, but it does pull out one middle school and move that to a secondary phase, so that five to 10-year range versus the zero to five-year range. And that's obviously the biggest difference as we're seeing a new middle school cost is about 60 million dollars. So that does move the needle pretty significantly by pulling out one middle school. Obviously, that could also be a compilation of some other priorities if that's what determined to be the path forward. And then the up, the upward option, up to 400 million dollars adds a few things in there to go from the 360 to the 400. So what that includes is an additional 20 million dollars for either an ECC rebuild, an additional capacity, or additions or improvements to add additional capacity to early childhood spaces throughout the district. It includes an additional 5 million for high school and middle school athletic improvements. And then it also includes 15 million for a district aquatic center. So those are kind of the three variables on that step up. So as we mentioned, we are still working to understand kind of where we want to be as we look at and what is both physically- as we look at and what is both physically and financially possible for the next 10 years of the district. So we'll continue these conversations as we move through the next step of the process, and then as we come back in front of you guys in the next month. What we're going to be doing over the next month is, we're going to continue to refine those feeder diagram options. We're going to continue to explore a few other options with the Facility Vision team to see which of those pieces, as Kate mentioned, there was kind of five or six variables in that option. You know, are we comfortable with these schools moving? Are we comfortable with consolidating these schools? Those sort of things that we need to come to an agreement on, which are the most critical pieces with a district this size. Obviously, there's lots of wants and needs that we've got to try and balance, both with right sizing the district. One thing we've looked at significantly there is just knowing, based on the number of elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools, we are a little imbalanced with the number of elementary schools and middle schools. So that is a big piece of why you're seeing so many consolidations there. Obviously, the more buildings you're operating and staffing, there's another financial impact there. So that's kind of a bigger-picture piece there that I think is going to be critical moving forward to kind of right-size both buildings and the district as a whole from a facility standpoint. The second piece is, obviously, enrollment changes in the course of year. So we've been in the process of updating these numbers that you saw tonight with the ones that we started with back in spring of last year. There actually have been some pretty big swings, both up and down between buildings. For example, I think there was one high school that about 110 kid increase, even though the district as a whole is declining. We are seeing some ups and downs there that we want to make sure we're looking at holistically, so that'll be a piece here over the next month. Also, looking at those bundles, we're going back and back-checking all those numbers to make sure everything is included in each of those projects, so that we've got that covered with wherever we land there. And then finally, just looking at that additional level of detail in terms of some of the justification for, you know, why we're consolidating and replacing one building ahead of another. So that'll all be there, again, with some of that backup in the report that'll be coming your way in the next month. So with that, I think our next piece is, we've got another Facility Vision team coming up here in the next couple of weeks, and then we will have, actually just got the next Community Vision team scheduled for Monday, December 4th, and then we look forward to coming back in front of you guys on December 12th, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. A lot of really good information, a lot to continue to work through, board. Again, we will have another update in December, and we will use that time in that afternoon when we come back to central office to have a working session to kind of talk through some of these big items and recommendations that are coming forward to us. Again, thank you to the Facilities Committee and all the members that are part of those committees and different committees that continue to meet, that include board members, staff, and community members. So really appreciate the work that you all have been going through that. So would open up the floor for any questions or thoughts, comments? Ms. Clark?
My question is around December the 12th, just so I can start getting my head in the right place. It's going to be a working session, so to kind of go ahead and make a final forward decision or working session to circle back to, I just want to make sure I'm thinking about this right, December 12th.
Yeah, so my understanding would be that on December 12th, we'll come back with additional information and potential recommendations. And what basically is, it's their report, they're finishing their report to us. So Hollis and Miller will conclude their scope of work that had been approved by the board. They will have recommendations or thoughts or feedback for us to consider. The board may or may not want to take any action at that meeting in terms of what's being recommended. That's completely on the board, but they will submit their final findings and reports and recommendations. At that point, the thought is to have some time in the afternoon for the board to kind of work through some of those larger-picture conversations, including financially and what those bundles may or may not look like. But ultimately, it's on this board to decide whether we want to do anything further with that information. So we'll spend some time that afternoon here at the boardroom having that conversation. So yes, I would ask everyone to be prepared, kind of work through that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I miss anything, Ms. Russell, from your -- okay.
I have a question. Now, there's so many rumors out. Is Kansas City, Kansas bankrupt? You know, I think we need to look at financially, what is the status of our city? You know, we need to include all of that. We need to look at our tax base. You know, all that's beautiful. I'm not against working toward improvements, but we got to also keep in mind, our people are being taxed to the nth degree. They got the pilot tax from BPU. We get our neutral rate. They get our neutral rate from the community college, and then the taxes from the city. So again, can we have some data from what is happening with Kansas City, Kansas? What is their financial status? Is that a rumor? Is it true? Is it false? Because that needs to be taken in consideration. And we've had people come in here and plead and beg, remember, hey, we're the working poor. If 90% of our students are at risk, their parents are at risk too. And let's consider all of these factors while we're taking in the report. Let's look at our financial status of our city, our county, all of that, when we make our decision, and we want to be fair to the people who live here and work here. So is there some way to get that information? Let's bring it all in, because that has to be considered. And there's nothing wrong with building. I don't have a problem with that, but my God, let's have a heart. What about the people who are working, who are struggling? It's easy to say, oh, I want this, I want this, I want that, but you got to pay for it. And I don't want us to end up like Missouri, where people are paying for their houses, and now they can't pay the taxes for them, and they may not have them. So I'm just saying, can we bring in all the information? I don't know who's going to get it, where we get it from, but what is the status of our city?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Page. So there's a lot to unpack in that, several questions within that question. I think that's part of what December 12th, that working session will be, to really take a deeper dive into the financial aspects of any of the recommendations that we may or may not want to look at and what's actually feasible for this district and this community at that time. I think those are all really important questions that we've got to wrestle with. And so I think, you know, staff and these committees are really looking at all of those implications, including the different taxing entities. And unfortunately, we can't control what other entities are doing, or the government's, the UG's financial standing, which I cannot speak to. But I think those are all really relevant questions that we've got to work through as a board and have data, to your point, understand and look at what, you know, again, where do we want to move forward, and how are we going to pay for that? That's a great question, and I think that's something that we'll wrestle with on December 12th, and kind of work through and put all the options that we can on the table. But I think that the financial piece, I think, is more of that. I think it's important to ask those questions now, and we have been continually, right? But I think that's something that we'll do a deeper dive on in December. But definitely valuable to continue to look into that.
And then I hope, we're not trying to do this, we got the reporting, bam, let's go. I'm not saying drag it, because that's what I get accused of. I'm saying, let's really make sure we do it right. That's all I'm asking, let's do it right, because this is not a one-day affair, December 12th. We're going to make a decision today. Now, that, to me, is crazy. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I would just say, there is a lot in there to unpack, and I also would echo Randy. I don't know in detail about the UG's finances. I know more about the finances that I've been tasked with facilitating and being a spokesperson and being a good steward of, and that's all I physically can control in this situation. I think you bring up lots of questions. I think you said before the importance of people showing up at commission meetings, asking those questions, being present, not just when they hear things, but all the time, because decisions are made in our community every day, and people just can't show up when it's convenient or when they heard something through the grapevine. However, I also would say in this conversation, I think whatever decision we get to, ultimately, whether it's a bond or not a bond, like, the ultimate decision does lay in the hands of the taxpayers. I think we are the facilitators of information, so we say, hey, this is what we could do. We could do this option, we could do this, we could leave it to capital outlay, we could do all of these things. That is what we are charged with doing, and making sure that environments matter. And so ensuring that our students, not only whoever is in front of that classroom, is qualified in quality, but also ensuring the spaces. Some of us went on a tour today, and I can say firsthand, some of the places, it bothers me. And so it's not okay, and I'm not willing to not stand in that regard for our students, because that is one step to student achievement as well. So.
All right, I agree with you, but I still contend, let's be careful, because we can have the best, and then they don't have a home when they go home to it. So I mean, let's consider that too, all the pieces.
Understandable.
Additional questions for folks from Hollis and Miller regarding the report or additional Nat, thank you so much for the information. Board, I would just continue to ask you to review and look at the information, think through it. I think December 12th conversation and final report that gets presented will have additional information, but a lot for us to think through and have those really good conversations on where we go next with the information that we receive. Thank you. Board, I am going to ask, and maybe I should have asked Dr. Campbell first, just looking at the time, I'm asking if the board would be okay with maybe taking a quick five-minute recess and then moving the academic report up so that we can hear from our academic report and not push that towards the end of the meeting, if the board is agreeable to that, or do you want to leave that where it currently sits?
I agree.
Move it out.
Okay.
I want to do that.
You say no?
I say no.
So, I want to make sure, I want to get consensus from folks before.
Yes.
The academic report. I'm hearing some folks say yes. Anyone strongly opposed? Is there some folks strongly opposed? Okay, so we're going to take a quick five-minute recess, and then six-minute recess, and then we will come back, and we'll start with the academic report. My apologies, Dr. Campbell, I should have given you a heads-up.[1352.86] My apologies, Dr. Campbell, I should have given you a heads up.
I'll be here till the clock.
Thank you for that quick break. We're going to come back and thank you, Dr. Campbell, for being flexible. And we will now have our fall academic report from Dr. Campbell. Thank you for joining us and for the information. Good evening.
Good evening. Board President Lopez, Vice President Drew, Board Member Superintendent Dr. Anna Stubblefield, participating staff and our community members, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent of KCKPS, and I'm here this evening with members from our Leadership and Learning Team as we present our fall academic data, specifically FastBridge, in addition to our disciplinary and attendance data. You have also received additional information that displays our school building profiles for you to take a deeper dive into student outcomes specific to each building. The spheres of influence supports our process and outcome goals across all of our district's continuous improvement frameworks displayed. The data shared this evening will highlight work aligned to themes one and two of the district's strategic framework, the five outcome areas aligned to the KISA accreditation framework, and our board goals academic, physical and mental health supports that leans into our North Star of by 2031, 100% of our students with no disparities in race or gender subgroups will graduate Diploma Plus. The information shared this evening correlates with our district's trajectory towards our 2031 North Star. However, later in this presentation, you will see how after this past school year, our trajectory was modified due to us exceeding the 55% goal by 6%, landing at 61% of our 2023 seniors graduating with a Diploma Plus. Aligned to the themes one and two in our strategic framework, the Leadership and Learning Team's work is focused around these three priorities that are displayed. Now, Dr. Fernandez Flores will share the 2023 Fall Academic Data Overview.
Buenas noches. Board President, Mr. Lopez, Vice President Drew, esteemed Board of Education members, Dr. Stubblefield colleagues, staff, students and community members. I'm Dr. Danita Fernandez Flores, the Executive Director of Diploma Plus College and Career Instructional Programs. Today, I'm here to provide an overview of the academic data for this fall and share the outcomes of Diploma Plus College and Career Initiatives. Throughout this presentation, our Directors of Diploma Plus will join me to discuss current and forecasted efforts aimed at enhancing our students' academic achievement. In our district, we monitor student academic progress in three ways. The Kansas State Assessment, the District Benchmark Assessments. These are designed in our district and we distribute them quarterly. They measure mastery of priority standards in our guaranteed and viable curriculum. The third progress is viewed through the screener of skills, which we will be reviewing today. And we will begin with FastBridge Early Math. The FastBridge Early Math is administered in pre-K through first grade. This assessment is a comprehensive tool designed to evaluate students' proficiency and fundamental math skills. These assessments provide valuable insights into individual student strengths and areas needing improvement, enabling educators to tailor their instructional approaches effectively. This assessment defines two benchmark cut scores resulting in three levels of risk. The three levels of risk, as seen in this bar graph depicting the district's outcome for fall of '22 and fall of '23. For fall of 2023, we see an increase of 3% in students in the category of low risk and corresponding decreases in some risk and high risk. This is a desired change. In this next table, we observe a positive change across the grade levels, kindergarten and first grade, with more improvement seen in first grade. As I move to this next table, we observe a positive change with the data disaggregated by gender, with the most significant improvement seen for female students. In this next table, we observe disaggregated data by race and a positive change over all categories. The most improvement is seen for two groups, black or African-American and multiracial. We observe a 5% positive change from last fall to this fall. This next table compares our identified schools as ISI and CSI to all other schools. We observe a positive change in the performance of ISI and other schools and a negative change in CSI schools. Mr. Snyder will now join me to address the programming work that is underway in this area.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to speak to you this evening. This year, we have had a focus in our early math for kindergarten and first grade in the area of IXL implementation this year, as well as Tier One Instructional Strategies professional learning that has been provided to teachers and principals within the district. We also continue to implement our Frog Street curriculum in our preschool classrooms to build that strong foundation of numeracy as they move through the grade levels.
So we now move to FastBridge AMATH, which evaluates students' proficiency and fundamental mathematical skills, and we administer this assessment in grades two through 12. You will observe that this assessment, it now has four levels of performance. This table presents data for students who took the assessment in grades two through 12 during the, both last year and this year's fall season. We observe a 1% change across all categories with a decline in the top two performance level and an increase in the lower level performance categories. As we expand the table to represent all grades, we're showing an increase in the top two performance levels for grades three, five, six, seven and 10, with the most significant positive difference in grade seven. Conversely, a decrease is noted in grades two, four, eight, nine, 11 and 12 with a notable decline in grade six. This next table shows the same data disaggregated by gender. As we continue to look at data disaggregated, we look at race. We observe a decrease in the percentage of students in the top two performance levels across all race categories with the most significant decline noted in the category multirace. This next table compares our identified schools, the ISI and CSI schools, to all other schools for students in grades two through 12. We observe a higher percentage of students in the top two performance levels for CSI and ISI while a decline in the other schools. Mr. Snyder will address the programming for the grades two through five.
With the continued use of the GVC documents to ensure that we are providing equity and pacing for our math, we focus with that in our elementary and early childhood. We also are currently working with a math pilot for this year to come later on with a recommendation to the Board of Education for a new mathematics resource. We have also attended what they call the Kansas Math Project through MTSS, which is part of the ARC recommendation document that we received last year to continue to evaluate and determine our instruction around the area of mathematics. Mr. Amaya will give you more information regarding six through 12.
Good evening, Board. Likewise, at the secondary level, we are also implementing math IXL as a supplement to the curriculum in the core mathematics, as well as per the ARC recommendation, we've created a curriculum development team to do vertical alignment in our math curriculum and to assess the alignment of the math priority standards, six through 12.
I will now move to FastBridge Early Reading. We observe a positive growth in early reading with an increase in the percentage of students in the top two performing categories and a decrease in the lower performance categories. Notably, this fall, there is a 6% increase in kindergarten through first grade students' scoring in the top performance category. This next table displays the same data by grade level. And this next table represents the data disaggregated by gender. And now disaggregated by race. This following table compares our identified schools, the ISI and CSI schools, to other schools. We observe no change for CSI schools and a negative change for ISI schools. Other schools had a positive change of 7%. Mr. Snyder will address the programming work that is underway in this area.
In the area of early reading, we have provided professional development to our teachers this year for our MTSS structures for reading intervention when we identify our earliest readers if they're needing extra support, to put them in a process and a protocol to ensure they're receiving evidence-based instruction and remediation around that. We also are monitoring our students to ensure by third grade, we are providing the Every Child Can Read Act data, so our students are reading at grade level. We are monitoring that within those grades as we speak.
Similar to AMATH, A-reading is the assessment administered to students in grades two through 12. You will again notice four categories of performance. This table presents data for students who took the assessment in grades two through 12 during both last year and this year's fall season. We observe a no change across all performance categories. When examining the data by grade level, changes are observed in the top two performance categories. Increases are noted in grades three, five, six, seven, 10 and 12, with the most significant positive difference in grade 12. Decreases in the percentage of students in the top two performance categories are observed in grades two, four, eight and 11, with a consistent 4% decline in grades two and 11. This table presents the data disaggregated by gender. And in this next table, we observe disaggregated data by race. Positive growth is evident in the Asian and white categories, while a decline is noted in the multiracial category. There is no change in the percentage of students at the top levels for black or African-American and Hispanic-Latino categories. This next table compares our identified schools, the ISI and CSI schools, to all other schools. We observe positive change in the performance of both categories of our identified schools and a negative change in the other schools. Mr. Snyder will address the programming work for grades two through five.
As we continue to implement a multi-tiered system of support focusing around reading, the core instruction or Tier One instruction is the primary focus because that is what receives all students, that foundational learning in the area of reading. We have continued to focus on Tier One instructional processes and programming for our Tier One instruction as well as strategies. We also have continued to provide professional learning around the MTSS protocols and how to support students who are in need of more targeted instruction in the area of literacy. Mr. Amaya will now provide you a six through 12 insight.
Six through 12, we have similar programming. We're addressing our core instruction largely through Avid APLM or modules that are consistent across six through 12, and those are high-yield instructional strategies. Likewise, we are also currently implementing Lexia in the initial stage of implementing Lexia and rewards at the high school level to intervene where needed.
We will now review the Diploma Plus credential attainment for Diploma Plus for the class of 2023 in comparison to previous years. This bar graph illustrates the distribution of attainment by category for graduating seniors. We noted declines in the ACT category, college credit attainment of 18 to 30 credits and internships. Conversely, there are increases in the percentage of graduates obtaining a Diploma Plus credential in IRCs and industry-approved projects. This table represents the same data, including total attainment at the bottom blue row. The bottom row contains unduplicated students but represents individual student achievements. Last year marked the first time we could track data comprehensively, capturing demographic information. In this table, we explore Diploma Plus credential attainment In this table, we explore Diploma Plus credential attainment by race and gender. Categories meeting or exceeding the district rate include females, Hispanic Latino, Caucasian white, and two or more categories. Those categories below the district rate are males and African-American or Black students. Notably, when examining data by school, we observe consistent lower attainment rates for males compared to their school rates, except for Alfred Fairfax Academy. Similarly, African-American Black students generally attain at a lower rate, with exceptions at Wyandotte High School and Alfred Fairfax Academy. This next graph represents our district's Diploma Plus trajectory encompassing our North Star goal and our current attainment progress. In blue, you can see the Diploma Plus attainment trajectory. As we surpassed our original goal for the class of 2023, a new trajectory course was created, illustrated in green. Dr. Wright will address the programming work that is underway in this area.
Good evening, Board members, Board President.
Good evening.
As Dr. Fernandez said, looking at the trajectory, we had to make adjustments. The experiences that our students have at the elementary level, we put a strong focus on career awareness in EC through fifth grade. And in that process, students have special experiences and activities that take place, like career fairs, virtual career fairs or personal career fairs. Our fifth graders go on field trips to visit colleges. Students participate in the connector, which is aligned to the GVC. And they also learn many things dealing with math and science through the School of Economics, through going to Holland 1916, and through participating in like a mini-city through JA Bezz Town. At the middle school, the strong focus is around career explorations. Our students experience career jumping, where many professionals from different fields come into the middle schools and share information about their careers to our students. Our students go to the classrooms of their interests, of the careers that they are interested in. Students also take place in job shadowing, where they are spending the day with a professional in the field. They are participating in events through Zello, creating resumes and knowing how to explore their interests in the careers in colleges that they want to attend. All of this is connected to our students' individual plan of study. And at the high school, we move with a strong focus on preparation and application. So our students participate in work-based learning experiences with industry professionals. A lot of our students take place, I'm sorry, a lot of our students participate in approved projects, where students work on real-world tasks for businesses and organizations. And some of our students participated last Friday at KSAB or KASB in Richert Hall, where our students were pitching to superintendents and board members how they created the designs for their vans when they had their vans wrapped from the high school. So if you were there, you were able to see how our students did a really good job sharing their experiences and really captivating everybody's attention on the work that they did. Our students also continue to take classes at KCKCC. Right now, we have 16 students who are on track to get their associate's degree in May, along with their high school diploma. We have a lot of students who are participating in KCC Technical Center, where they will be receiving a lot of industry-recognized credentials. And then we currently, from my job fair that took place in September, our students were offered over $285 million in scholarships. So we are on track. We are working very hard to stay on track.
As we conclude this portion of the data presentation, our goal for this school year is approximately 770 to 780 graduates attaining a Diploma Plus. Currently, as of this month, 729 individual 12th grade students have achieved this credential. We are on track.
Good evening.
Evening.
Tonight, I'll be sharing with you an overview of the district's attendance and behavior metrics from the first quarter. In our commitment to academic excellence and student well-being, the district leadership and learning team has analyzed the data to identify trends and areas for continuous improvement as we track towards 2031. As a reminder, last spring, our KISA visitation team noted the positive trajectory in the areas of attendance and SEL. They also tasked us with the recommendation for our team to begin placing a greater focus on developing explicit SEL instructional plans at the EC through 12th grade level. Additionally, we will continue to engage in collaborative work to ensure that our Tier One and Tier Two instructional resources with explicit SEL instruction are developed and aligned to the MTSS framework, specifically with relation to attendance, discipline, and overall school climate. On this slide, you see details of students, the percentage of students that are meeting the 95% attendance goal at the end of the quarter. You'll see here that there indicates a 3% increase compared to where we were last school year. And while we acknowledge this positive shift, we do want to remain committed to continuous improvement. We are doing that by surrounding all of our strategies with effective Tier One attendance strategies. And you'll also see that we have the projected trajectory for our 95% attendance benchmark moving towards 2031. This slide details the district's top three incidents by month. You'll see as we look at these at a high level, some of the actionable solutions to address each are comprehensively. You'll see that there was a shift in some of the different colors from where we were last year and where we were this year. Some of the things that you'll see here for this year's top infractions include defiance of authority, horseplaying, inciting to fight or fighting. To address some of these, our proposed solutions are additional explicit opportunities to continue to build positive relationships and equip staff with positive behavior management techniques. Yesterday, our district MTSS teams were engaged in a PD that was led by the DEI Department around building a restorative school culture grounded in agency, identity, and positive relationships. By offering targeted support and implementing proactive structures for these infractions, we can significantly reduce these incidents. This slide denotes the Quarter One discipline incidents disaggregated by race, ethnicity, and gender. One thing that you'll see is the gap is closing between our African-American and Hispanic-Latino students as we look at the comparative data. We also see a reduction in referrals for both gender and race subgroups. However, when we look at the data for this year, we'll see that there is a slight reduction for African-American males and an increase for Hispanic-Latino male students. Moving forward, we need to continue to dive deeper into the examination of specific challenges that may be focused by these subgroups. By identifying and addressing some of the underlying factors contributing to these higher referral rates, we'll be able to create processes that'll be more fair and supportive with our disciplinary system. In this slide, you'll see the top three discipline incident locations during Quarter One compared to last school year. You'll see that there was a decrease in incidents in the classroom and hallway locations. Please denote that by the gray bar for 2022, those were incidents that occurred outside of schools. This year, that location was not in our top three. However, we did see an increase in incidents surrounding the restrooms across the campuses. On this slide, you'll see the number of Class One and Two offenses over the first quarter of this school year. Some of the top three resolutions we thought were important as we shifted the code that were not seen in previous years were removal of triggers, changing in proximity, reteaching of expectations, and parent guardian conferences for Class One. The top two Class Two resolutions were parent guardian conferences, conferencing with the student, and extended-day skill building. So what that says is we've been more proactive to make sure that our campuses are connecting with parents and families to really provide a supportive students, supportive system for our students at the Class One and Two level. This graph is also broken into areas, so you'll see it across elementary, middle, and high school. This slide looks at our projected trajectory with our KISA goal of reducing suspensions by 5% each year to 2031. You'll see that based on our current data, we have a projected target to 2031. This will help us to set building and district monitoring goals that can be implemented each year to help our students on our campuses. We recognize that there is a need for more comprehensive solutions in response to the increase in school district incidents resulting in suspension from the first quarter of 2022. As our leadership and learning team continues to examine this data and also looking at the root cause at a high level, we are again committed to implementing additional training and development programs. Some of these could be aligning SEL lessons for specific infractions so that buildings can triage and proactively address the discipline issues when they arise. Also looking at the trend data for the top infractions for each of our specific building. Additional suggestions might be onboarding of students and shifting what that looks like, especially in the transition grades for the beginning of each school year to help promote proactive discipline and school climate expectations. On this slide, you'll see the recent trends in disciplinary incidents and resolutions within our schools by level. The data analysis reveals a noteworthy shift in Class Three and Class Four infractions and resolutions. While we're happy to see the decrease in Class Four infractions, we also still need to address the increase in Class Three incidents. By understanding the different root causes of these Class Three incidents and implementing tailored strategies, we'll be able to help our buildings to foster a safer and more conducive learning environment for our students. And that is one of the tasks for our MTSS groups this school year.
Okay, so the end result of all true learning is change, while also recognizing effective change is a process that we are committed to working towards every day for every student. A great deal of data has been shared with you all this evening, so what questions might you have for us?
Thank you very much, Dr. Campbell and team. A lot of great information to dig through. Board, are there questions for the team tonight? Yes, Ms. Humphries.
I have one question. Do we track, do we track what time of day discipline problems happen? I'm specifically looking at high school. Is it before 9:00 AM? They have more defiance of authority or? Something I would be interested in knowing.
So great question. That is a tool that we can actually provide to you. We did not include it in this data component, but we are able to, within the Big Five data, determine the time of day that most of the behaviors are taking place. And that'll be something we will look to include and provide information to you at the end of this week.
Additional questions?
Thank you.
Saying none. Thank you, Dr. Campbell and team. Board, as questions come up, if they arise, please always reach out to Dr. Stubblefield, and she can follow up with the staff and get any responses to you. Again, thank you, team, for that. And thank you for your flexibility to move up in the agenda. I appreciate that. We will continue with our agenda, jump back up to Agenda Item Eight. And Board, these are up for potential action if it is the will of the Board. First up, we have, it is recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the 2024-25 and 2025-26 early childhood calendars as submitted by Dr. Megan Cook, Director of Head Start Early Childhood, Dr. Amy Washington, Executive Director of Elementary Education, and Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent, and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions on this item? Saying none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item, it's recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the 2024-2025 and the 2025-2026 district calendar as submitted by Dr. Campbell and is recommended by Dr. Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, discussion? None. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, it's recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education accept the middle school schedule. This is for action, correct?
Yes.
It says information, okay.
Oh, it says information.
Just wanted to confirm, okay. To accept the middle school schedule for 2024 and 2025 as submitted by Mr. Cole Amaya, Dr. Fernandez Flores, Dr. Campbell, and Dr. Stubblefield.
Did you say this was for information?
This for?
Dr. Campbell, it is listed under Updates and Improvement, but it says information, so it should be shifted. It's information.
Information, okay.
It's new business.
So Board, this is a new business item. No action needed tonight. This is for information.
Can you, can someone in a future generation of this share what the differences are? Because everything on here says modified. It doesn't say, like, this is the changes the comparison would be. And when does this in the next school year?
Fall, yes.
More context would be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Great suggestions. Thank you, Ms. Russell. This item will potentially come back before the Board at a future Board meeting. The next item, it is recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the graduation dates for May of 2024, submitted by Dr. Bilbo Urban, Dr. Wilson, Dr. Campbell, and Dr. Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions or discussion?
I don't have a question, just a comment. I respect what they've done, but I just believe that every school should have their own graduation, and it shouldn't be on a Sunday. That's just my opinion. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Additional comments or questions? Saying none. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, no.
Rachel Russell.
I don't have a question. I will just make this comment. I know that we are trying to get there. We can continue to do better. Our kids deserve better. Let's make it happen, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item, it's recommended Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education accept the bid from CNC Produce in the amount of $1,311,266 for produce vendor for the second semester of the 2023-2024 school year in accordance with the requirements of Board policy DJED as submitted by Mr. Wayne Correll, Mr. Steve Lilly, and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item, it is recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the legislative agenda and priorities for upcoming legislative session as submitted by Mr. Edwin Birch and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield. Board, I will point out one. Hopefully, you had a chance to review the draft that's in here. There is language on Medicaid expansion. And there is language, the other new language is the funding for early childhood, I believe, that's also in there. So hopefully, you had a chance to review that. Would entertain a motion to approve the legislative.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Thank you, everyone. Hearing none. Thank you, everyone, for your input on this. And this, I'll also just remind our Board that there is a Legislative Breakfast on December.
Sixth.
Sixth, thank you. And it should be on your calendar. If you need additional information, please contact Ms. Smith and she'll get that to you. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next Agenda Item, Item Number Nine, this is new business and for information purposes tonight, Board, please review, take a look. If there are any questions tonight, happy to entertain questions. If not, please send your questions to Dr. Stubblefield and we will follow up with responses. But I'll open up the floor for any questions. Yes, Ms. Russell.
So I would like to go outside of protocol. We only have one meeting until this, and that's in December. And I think, based on the information we've been provided, that I believe in order for us to make sure they can get the merchandise and hopefully by the spring have everything to a place where they can start January 2024 with the devices that are appropriate for the classroom and instructional needs and all of that. Because my thought is, as I'm looking at this tonight, December 13th gets here, 16th, whenever we're meeting. We have a holiday. We have, everyone else is busy buying things, so then you have shipping. And then we have people out of the office. So I just, I'm just saying potentially if the Board would be willing to, if there aren't any glowing issues to go outside of protocol to ensure that our multilingual department can start the year off strong. If this isn't, which it is because they're saying it is, but that's just my comment, feedback. I'd love to hear what other folks are thinking, so.
Thoughts from the Board?
Yes, I just, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry.
Question, you're fine.
No, I was just saying, I don't understand why they didn't have it at the beginning. If they have a budget, why wasn't that budgeted in to get the things that they need? That just doesn't make sense. And I don't have a problem with what you just said, but in my mind, they have a budget. They should have had this.
And I don't know the background of why, but I have that same.
Yeah, that doesn't make.
That notion is one I have, but it makes it to not be in the way of students getting what they need and aides having what they need. Like, I think that's a bigger conversation is how do all of these things always just appear midway? I don't know.
Ms. Rodriguez is coming forward to explain why.
Good evening, Board. Last year, when we did the approval for the iPads, my department didn't have quite enough to cover that cost for iPads and to get that. And so as we reevaluated the staffing, also thinking about the other budget pieces that came into dual language, again reminding you all that we also encompassed language support this year, just needed a little bit of time to move some things around and be very thoughtful in what that was. And then we also took a survey from our staff to determine if iPads or a different device was appropriate for them. And from that feedback, MacBooks was the preference just based on their role. So now we're at a point where we can collect all of our devices and repurchase and put those out as well as placing out professional development with curriculum and instruction that didn't impede with some of the training that was already occurring.
So just to clarify, they currently have devices? This is?
They do, yes. We have iPads that were purchased several years ago that are now becoming obsolete with the new ones that are in the hands of students and teachers, but also thinking about some of the work that our instructional aides do. Some do written translation, difficult to do on an iPad, as well as the data that they put into Infinite Campus, just a little bit easier to do on a computer.
Ms. Clark, you had a question?
No, I, my, you just answered my question.
So I'm making a motion to approve the purchase of Apple MacBooks for ESL Instructional Aides as submitted by Jacqueline Gregory-Gris.
There's a motion on the floor? Second. There's a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? I'll just say, Ms. Rodriguez, thank you to you and your team, and I know Ms. Russell mentioned it, but the tour today with the dual language program at the different schools was really great to see. I would just encourage our Board as we look at budgeting for next year and as we look at continuing to increase capacity, how do we continue to support this critical department and work that's happening with our students? Looking at all of the languages that we support in our district, all of the different students and families that we support, they're doing some absolutely great work in that department. And I would just encourage us as a Board and as leadership to look at how we grow that capacity. I know they're, as everyone, stretched pretty thin, but just I think it would be critical for us to continue to look at that capacity building there. Additional questions, thoughts? Not, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes. And thank you for your explanation. I don't know where you just went. Oh, thanks.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell, for that. All right. Next on our agenda, we have reached the policy items on our agenda. Board, I would actually switch up the items if you don't mind. We will take on Item B first. This is, would take a motion to accept for third read policy, JBC.
Just so everybody remembers, JBC is your current enrollment policy. The changes are just to remove the stuff on non-residency, which will be taken up in JBCC now. So that's, that's really the change to JBC. It doesn't really substantively change what you're doing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? None. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
I should have had a question, but yes, go ahead.
Rachel Russell.
We're on JBC, right?
Yes, correct.
Yes.
Dr., Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. And Ms. Page, if your question comes to you, please send those, send any question you have. We definitely want to make sure we cover any questions. So the next policy we'll take up is Item C. We're going to look at, is there a motion to accept for second read policy, JBCC? This is the policy that we need to have a third read and approved before January. Mr. Gohean, any additional information?
No, and this is in the same format as it was presented at the last meeting prior to the public hearing. So it is important we approve it for second read tonight so that we can make a final approval in December and meet the statutory deadline. If there are any changes the Board wants us to look at between now and then, that's perfectly fine, but we do need to make sure it moves forward tonight.
Is there a motion to accept for a second read?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Saying none. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Board, we'll jump back up to Item A. This is Policy JFCA, which deals with early graduation. We had a comment on that earlier today. I know there's been a discussion on this. Want to open the floor for any additional comments, questions? Mr. Gohean, anything you want to share on this item or Dr. Stubblefield?
The last time that we were asked to put this, just this policy on the agenda for a discussion, and then during the course of that discussion, there were some suggested changes to be made to the policy. We took our best shot in red to have the Board take a look at that. There may be additional changes the Board wants to do. We made it clear that students who graduate early and are in good standing are allowed to participate in prom, graduation, ceremonies, and other approved senior activities in the spring following their graduation. We also made it clear that participation in those activities would be subject to the student agreeing to abide by any district policy since they will have graduated and are no longer governed by those policies as a non-student necessarily. So that's what we put together. Certainly, this is for the Board to navigate if you guys want to make changes to this.
Now, she implied, I said she implied that there was no consistency. So is that, will this be the rule for everybody, no matter what high school they're at?
So one of the things that will accompany this at the next read is the updated form. So once that is created, then Dr. Irving can make sure the principals understand it and make sure that they are doing it with fidelity based off of that.
So, and to be clear, this, this policy, if adopted by the Board, applies to uniformly to all schools in the district. Some of what was being discussed during the public comment related to practices or procedures that, that may be being handled a little inconsistently, I think. Dr. Stubblefield's talking about the form that's submitted when, when a student wants to graduate early. So those, those are things that will have to be ironed out separately from the policy.
Also, just to piggyback, and I know that you all are working on like what the process is or what that practice is in addition to just the form, like what does that look like? I think it might be helpful just to have that at least out so that we can all see and every school knows, okay, these, this is the process, this is the timeline, everyone has that. I know you all are working through that.
So we'll attach it next time, yes. We, we can, if it's updated prior to the Board meeting, we can attach it to the end of the week before we bring it on December 12th.
Ms. Russell.
Yeah, so some additional feedback that I got is would the Board be willing to define good standing? That is a very subjective thing, valid, very valid point. One interpretation of this policy is, is that the Board is actually the one who approves and denies the requests. The requests are sent to the superintendent. And so maybe we need to clean up that language because it says the Board shall approve or deny each request. The sentence before or the sentence after insinuates that you're just turning that documentation into the superintendent. There is some clarity requested around the type of diploma that we are saying students must have because if you go back to the updated policy IHF, we now have three types of diplomas. So clarifying that, so that's not subjective because you have some buildings who are saying they want students to have 26 credits versus the 21 credits. And then the last thing that I would suggest is somewhere the student wishes to graduate from high school early may request the students and parents shall consult with high school administrative and/or guidance personnel in accordance with policy, with, in adding the words in accordance with Board Policy IHF to, to develop a graduation plan. So it is then deferring back to the Board policy of around Board graduation requirements as what that graduation plan looks like instead of all of these extra additional added components, which I think is the complexity for why we are here at this moment now. So those are the five things. I'm happy to send it out to the full Board as well as Greg and Dr. Stubblefield to, as we work, continue to work on this to, but those were the things that were brought to my attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Yes, if you could share that with the full Board and Mr. Gohean and Dr. Stubblefield. Additional discussion on this item, this policy? So for tonight, this was for discussion. We're not taking any type of action on the current policy. We were just discussing and giving any additional feedback, correct? Mr. Gohean, or?
My understanding tonight would have been the first read and then you can add whatever changes for the second read, but either way works for me because it came for review at the last meeting, but.
The only, the only thing I would, I'm just going to throw this out there. If you're wanting some, we're out of time to have something in place for early graduation this year, so you're still going to be under your old policy. You know, I think it's clear from the Board's discussion that you want it applied uniformly among the school district or the school buildings in the district. Just understand that this isn't currently in effect, so.
What I heard last meeting was that Dr. Stubblefield was going to go back to her team based on the unedited form, make those changes. I hear what you're saying, but I think there were things, this will clean it up for the future, but I think it sounded like there was a mutual understanding of what we were doing for this year. That would be similar, but I hear what you're saying.
And that's correct. Last year, we did allow them to participate in graduation in prom, and that's the same this year. I think what this is cleaning up is to make sure that it's standardized, like there's a common understanding. So students can graduate early, they can participate in prom and graduation and other approved senior activities. And good standing was meaning that when they left, they're not suspended or expelled or those, like that is good standing or meet whatever like requirements there are to attend those events.
Yeah, the good standing was meant to address disciplinary issues similar to in our general enrollment statute, which requires students, both resident and non-resident, to be in good standing before they enroll. And the idea there is that you could have a student who decides to go ahead and graduate early because they're facing a suspension or an expulsion. And if that's the case, they would still be entitled to graduate early if they meet the academic requirements. But we probably would not want that student returning to a campus or a ceremony or something along those lines.
I think we all understand it's the people that come after us that we need to make sure we're using that same language because if you're not in this room right now having this conversation, good standing in 10 years might mean something completely different to someone else. And so I just want to honor that person's, and put it in the space. We can take it out. We cannot, we can keep it. We could add the definition. We could, but I want to honor that that was feedback proven.
No, the purpose of having these in front of the Board is to get that feedback and to understand what concerns there might need to be addressed. I was just publicly disclosing what we meant by good standing, that's all.
Same here. Is it, I just.
Would the Board like to accept Policy JFCA for a first read tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion?
My further, I'm sorry, further discussion is not necessarily connected to this policy, but I also want us to take in consider, consideration the process. So if we have a student that finds out they can graduate early, like what's the conversation of saying, but you also can go to junior college or you also can be involved in Diploma Plus? So, and if you graduate early, then you are not now able to take that option. So I don't know what the policy and how consistent our counselors are in that conversation, but just making sure that students understand. I understand circumstance. I understand that. I also understand having a student in school just to have them in school. Like, they're taking all these other classes, but they really don't need them to graduate. But I want them to understand the process. Like, you don't have to early graduate. You also can go to KSC.
So in most cases, that's happening.
Okay.
And, and, yeah, and that does happen in most cases, but, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Additional comments? I think that's part of what we're cleaning up with that process and what the consistency across the different buildings and what those conversations are with their counselors or their advocates at the building and.
Respectfully, I think we have to keep saying consistency just because we've just seen too many times where we thought we had a consistent process. I think we've been out of alignment for so long and now we're trying to get back, trying to, not trying to get back, trying to get in alignment. And so I just don't want a student to have met with the counselor at this school, but if they have met with the counselor at this school. met with the counselor at this school, but if they had met with the counselor at this school, they would have gotten some different feedback or some different direction. So just, I'm going to keep using the word consistency because I'm not saying anything, anyone is doing anything wrong. I'm saying we've had practices in place for so long that maybe we need to make sure we're considering and considering and continuing, that's the word. I'm looking forward to have these conversations.
I would just maybe add that as you clean up the forms, if you, for lack of a better word, or clarify the forms, that there is an early graduation package and that that would include, you know, what's good standing, you know, fine, da-da-da-da-da-da, and also here's, you know, here are the other opportunities, da-da-da. So.
And that package says all school.
Yeah.
I like, I like that because I was going to say, I think what you're speaking to are the people who fall through the cracks, who are like, okay, I just want to get out of here. But they don't necessarily understand their options, and that could be because of a plethora of reasons, because you're so busy in sports that you don't, you're never at the assemblies or, like, there could be a plethora of reasons, but making sure that it's like, if early graduation is not what you choose, remember that these are the things that we offer here, but you at least have an opportunity to see the information.
I, I agree, especially if you have a student or, or parent is constantly working with the student because maybe that student is not behaving, but maybe they don't need these credits. And just as, as it was said tonight, I don't need these credits, so why am I here? Yep.
Plethora of reasons.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Board, I think we have covered almost every agenda item. I know we've hopped around, so thanks for your flexibility tonight. The last agenda item tonight is just communications. We will hear from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Okay, quickly, just a few things. As a district, we collectively recognize Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day at our elementary schools and some of our secondary schools. Ruby Bridges advanced the cause of the civil rights movement at the age of six, when she became the first African-American student to integrate an elementary school in New Orleans in 1960. Thanks to all the schools who participated in the recognition of Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. As you heard earlier, it's American Education Week. We appreciate all of our educators and thank you, everyone, for all that you do. I want to remind everyone that to join us tomorrow at 5:00 PM at Gloria Willis Middle School to learn more about the dangers of fitna, hear the testimonies and stories from law enforcements and those who have been directly impacted by it. The session will be held in both English and Spanish simultaneously, and free dinner will be served, so please share that information. Lastly, Sumner Academy will host a virtual information meeting on Thursday, November 16th, from 5:30 PM to 6:30 PM for parents interested in their children applying for the program. Applications will open on November 27th. Visit sumner, S-U-M-N-E-R dot org for admissions information.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. I'll keep mine brief to just one item tonight, and I can go into detail at the next meeting just for the, because of time. Thank you to the board for the opportunity to go out to the KASB Annual Convention in Wichita. Myself and Ms. Humphries, Ms. Drew were able to attend. Mr. Goheen was there as well. Great opportunity to learn from fellow board members across the state of Kansas. I will just say, lift up that Randy Watson in his conversation again reiterated the importance of moving students out of Level One, which we are seeing in our district. And so I think that is something that we'll continue to focus on, and chronic absenteeism and how that is an area that all districts across the state are still needing to work on. And so tonight, we heard some great information about what we're doing to decrease chronic absenteeism and the initiatives that we have in place to, to work on that, and to ensure that our students are ready post, post-graduation, whatever that looks like, whether it's in, in our Diploma Plus program, but some of those other skills and soft skills that students need to gain outside of just academic skills to be able to be successful in whichever direction they go. So I, I'm happy to dive into more detail at the next meeting, next conversation, but it was a great time to learn with fellow board members. Thank you. Open the floor to the rest of the board.
I just want to thank Dr. Nguyen and the staff at Quandero Elementary School. We had a super Ruby Bridges program. We did a read aloud. We had T-shirts. The kids did their walk on the playground, decorated the fences with posters, and the whole school got involved, and the kids did an excellent job. So just again, thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Thank you, Principal Albright, and the whole entire staff, everyone from the janitorial staff to the cafeteria workers. And then tomorrow, we'll be at Bertram Carruthers for Read Aloud, and we'll continue our Ruby Bridge celebration. And I also went to the Beeley Community Center. We had a Halloween fest. We had over 250 adults and kids. So people are looking for something to do. So if you can, any of the community centers, go buy volunteer help. These are our kids, and we need to support them.
I learned to capture a bubble. Keep my mouth shut. But the kids learned, and they responded, and it was just really, really refreshing and rewarding. But also, excuse me, at the, while I wasn't in Wichita, we had a board of directors meeting Thursday night.
I just have one. I want to give kudos to our superintendent, Dr. Stubblefield, that on November the 3rd, she was at Oak Ridge Youth Development School, and the theme was rekindling the fire. And she was the speaker. Her three main points that really enlightened me was to ignite the fire, embrace the change, and rise from the ashes. I just want to say thank you. Did a beautiful job. That's it.
Yeah. I also just want to echo Mrs. Drew's remarks. I found that keynote very moving, and thank you very much for sharing your story on a beautiful evening. I also was not able to attend KSB this weekend, but I was able to be in the presence of educators across the district who represent as educators of color at Amplify. It was my first time attending. It was such a good time, and I look forward. I've already talked to Kenese about many ways that we can continue to support our educators of color in the space, both here in KC KPS, but also across the region. I also just want to give a, a final thank you and shout out to Dr. Rodriguez and her team for all the work they did to take us on a tour of all three dual lang, language programs today. It was really eye-opening, refreshing, and always a really great time to see our students in action, both in Spanish and in English. So gracias.
Say nada.
Muchas gracias.
Okay.
Additional board members?
Como dice.
Como say.
All right. If nothing else, thank you, board, and thank you, staff. This meeting is adjourned. Have a great night.